...yesterday that prayer at city meetings is constitutional and therefore I have this extreme pleasure of welcoming Pastor Michael Johnson to give the announcement. Come forward Pastor.
Let us pray. Our gracious and everlasting God, we come before thee to thank you for blessing us to be here. We ask that you will bless this assembly. Bless the great leaders of this city. Grant wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to make the right choices, to positively impact our community as well as our families. Lead and guide us and keep us. This we pray in thy precious and holy name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. With that, I open the May 6 meeting of the City of Vero Beach City Council. Mrs. Fox, call the roll please.
Mr. Fletcher?
Here.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Mrs. Turner? Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Preliminary matters, agenda additions, deletions. Are there any additions or deletions, please?
None here.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations. The first one I shall read. If Gina Stenit and Barbara Smith come forward, please. I saw them earlier. And anyone else associated, most welcome. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenge, and the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs. And whereas AmerCorps and Senior Corps address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nation from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families to preserving the environment and helping communities recover from national disaster. In Vero Beach, 12 AmerCorps members serve the community as reading tutors. And whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas national service participants serve in more than 70,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic neighborhood and faith-based organizations through their direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and create, I guess, the return in taxpayer dollars. The word is not clear, I'm sorry. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with mayors across the country to support the Mayor's Day recognition for national service. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida does hereby recognize National Service Recognition Day and thanks those who serve and find ways to give back to their communities. And I'd be most interested to hear about the program. I asked Barbara a little bit about it and I didn't know enough, so educate the public, please.
Absolutely. Thank you again for having us, Mayor and Council. We are a tutoring program. We provide AmerCorps tutors in four schools in Vero Beach. Those 12 tutors serve about 125 students. And they are pre-K through third grade students. We just started our pre-K program with the Indian River Community Foundation, and that's what Pete here is a part of. So he works with three- and four-year-old students with pre-literacy skills. And then our other tutors work with kindergarten through third grades students who are below grade level, so we're helping support that moment and helping work towards that literacy goal. And what, you know, we do, you know, testing and we have lots of statistics on how great our tutors are, but I think a brief story of a student that we had this year. He started out as a fourth grade student. We don't usually take them, but we took him on because he was such an interesting student. Fourth grade, he didn't know his letters, he couldn't write his name, he couldn't, I mean, nothing. We spoke with his teacher about last month, and he is almost on grade level and should surpass it by the end of the year. And he's been working with his tutors since September. So our tutors do amazing work, amazing transformations with these kids, so we're proud to be here and thank you for recognizing what we do.
Well, thank you. Barbara, do you have any comment?
Not really. Just wanted to say that we are working very closely with the Learning Alliance, with the Moonshot Moment. Our tutors have been participating in all the different events that we've been doing. Plus, you know, their work in the school, which, you know, our goal is to have these kids reading by third grade. We want them reading when we're working with them. I guess that's about it. Thank you for having us today.
And sir, do you have anything you want to say? You don't have to, but we welcome any information.
As a young man, I had learning disabilities, dyslexia. And so I overcame that by the grace of God. And I feel compelled to help little ones who may not be found out about with their learning disabilities or just maybe a little backwards. I love to work with them. I love to bring them forward and help them to learn to read and have all the adventures that their life should have by reading. Thank you.
Well, thank you all very much, and please come forward for the proclamation. If you'd like a picture, you're welcome to take one.
Some good photographers in the audience.
Barbara, get front and center here. Thank you. Thank you for all you did.
Okay, if I can have the policewomen and men come up to the podium? We're going to do a proclamation for National Police Week. We can get the rest of the guys up here too, right?
Please, come on up. We need to have a good showing.
Don't let Kevin come up.
We can call more in, too.
The proclamation reads that the Congress of the United States of America has designated the week of May 11th through May 17th as National Police Week. And there are more than 900,000 sworn law enforcement officers now serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the City of Vero Beach Police Department. And law enforcement officers are our guardians of life and property, defenders of individual freedoms, warriors in the war against crime, and dedicated to the preservation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And all law enforcement officers deserve our appreciation for the work they do and that citizens fulfill an important civic responsibility by supporting their work to protect our community so that we can achieve a better and more secure future for our children and grandchildren. And in 2013, 111 American police officers died in the line of duty, an 8% decrease from 2012, which was the fewest number of fatalities for the law enforcement profession since 1959. Therefore, the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of May 11th through May 17th as National Police Week and call upon our citizens in the community to especially honor and show our sincere appreciation for the City of Vero Beach police officers by deed, remark, and attitude to show their thanks to our men and women who make it possible for us to live in our communities safe and secure each day.
David?
Well, good morning and thank you very much. On behalf of our 52 strong sworn officers at the Vero Beach Police Department, I want to thank you for the proclamation this morning, again, which signifies May 11th and through the 17th as National Police Week. You mentioned the 111 from 2013 that was actually down, as you also mentioned. The gun-related in the line of duty deaths were down as well, fewer since 1887. So although one is too many, those numbers last year reflect quite a big, quite a decrease. Again, the fewest since 1959 overall, and the gun-related deaths, the fewest since 1887. But this year, we're down about 5% nationwide. We're at third. The other day, I was putting a few notes together for this morning, and I went on the Officer Down Memorial Page, and, you know, you go there each day, unfortunately, and you see another one. I had 35 noted the other day, and as of this morning, we're at 38. So there was a few, a couple Alaskan state troopers that were killed last week, and an individual from Georgia just yesterday, I believe. And of course, over the weekend, we had Trooper Chelsea Richard hit by a motorist up in Marion County in the Ocala area and died, leaving behind a young son. So the numbers are certainly decreasing, but one is too many, as we all know. Again, there's 38 this year so far. The other two in Florida, in February, there was a deputy in Orange County that was killed by gunfire. And in the following month, March, Windermere officer was killed by fire as well. So three this year in the state of Florida. We also want to remember Corporal Richard Raskowski, our only fallen officer in the county, 1986, he was killed in the line of duty as well. So we want to remember him, and we'll do just that on May 12th, which is next Monday. We're doing the law enforcement wreath placement ceremony, which we normally do in the morning. We're doing it at 5:30 this year, which in hopes that more can come after work and that they don't have to try to get away during work. So again, 5:30, Monday, the 12th, in front of the courthouse, 2,000 block of 16th Avenue. And then just again, lastly, I want to thank the officers, men and women of the Vero Beach Police Department, who day in and day out protect citizens here in the city. And when they're sleeping at night, they can make sure they're safe and sound, their families. So we're proud of that. And once again, our crime rate has gone down. I'm not going to boast about it too much, because when it goes up, I got to talk about it as well. But the second year in a row, our crime rate overall in the city here is down about 14%. So thanks again.
Thank you.
Can't get away that easy.
That's extra.
Yeah, I noticed you said crime scene on the back.
All right, as we move along, this morning, we have our transactional attorney, John Igo here, but we also have Mr. Chef Wright, who's in addition to our legal effort to sell our electric utility at Florida Power and Light. And it's on the agenda as an update from attorney Chef Wright. So Chef, I invite you to the podium.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members, folks. First, I'm really glad to be here. Thank you very much for inviting me to be part of the Vero Beach team in this challenging endeavor. I thought I might tell you all just a little bit about myself before I jump into this. I was born and raised in Miami. I'm a second-generation native born Floridian. My dad was born in Daytona in 1917 and moved to Miami when he was about three. I lived most of my life there until I went to college. And I graduated from University of Florida in economics. Duke, I have a master's degree in economics from Duke University. And then I had another career as an economist. In the meantime, I taught college for a couple of years in Minnesota and worked in government research in Minnesota and Kentucky. Moved back to Florida in December of 1980, where I took a job with Governor Bob Graham's Energy Office and worked there for about a year and a half, then served on the Public Service Commission staff as an economist for about seven years. And then I got the break of my life and went to law school. I went to Florida State Law, graduated in 1992. And so I've been working on energy issues, literally, since December of 1980 in the state of Florida. And I'm really glad to be here. Thank you. Since you all hired me, kind of a status report and issues and next steps, that's kind of what I'm going to cover. Since you all hired me, I have met in person, face-to-face with Wade Litchfield and Pat Bryant of Florida Power and Light. I met with them almost immediately after you hired me. I've met a couple of occasions with Fred Bryant and Jody Finkley from FMPA. I've met with Chris Browder and Jan Esperu from OUC, all face-to-face. I've had numerous other phone conversations with all of those folks, as well as with Mr. Igo and Mr. Miller, and probably a couple other people in the mix there. And as you probably know from seeing lots of paper lying, there is an awful lot of documentation related to these transactions. And so I have been reviewing those and continuing to review those and am continuing to review those. I'm keeping after that. As I think I've said to each of you, my goal here is to push this deal forward and get it done as quickly as possible. That, to be very frank, is a challenging undertaking, but that's my job. And as I've told you, I will do it as efficiently as possible and keep after it. The, we've got a lot to do to get there. We've got to, ultimately, to accomplish the deal, we have got to get a lot of approvals. We've got to get the approvals of the 19 other cities and towns who are project participants in one or another of the four contracts to which Vero Beach is a party. The requirements project contract, the Stanton 1 Project PPA, power purchase agreement and project support contract, Stanton 2 contracts, and the St. Lucie contracts. All in, there are a total of 20 cities there. We have to get the approvals of the other 19. We also have to get the approvals of the bond counsel, the bond trustee, and the bond insurers, and the consulting engineers for each of these projects. To accomplish this, because the transaction that the city and FPL have agreed to proceed with is really not contemplated by the assignment and termination provisions in these various contracts, we have got to get the approvals of all of these entities, the cities, towns, and bond parties, to amend our contracts with FMPA to allow these to go forward. And unfortunately, they do have to be individual approvals. So we will be working on contract amendments to allow, ultimately allow the assignment and sale to FPL to address OUC bond covenant issues. And that's a set of issues that was brought to light by a letter sent last week by Chris Browder, who is the general counsel of Orlando Utilities Commission, OUC, to Fred Bryant at FMPA. To condense that to the real guts of the matter, there are some issues embedded in our contracts with FMPA, which OUC would be assuming that would create some potential bond issues for OUC. If they agree to our covenants, it would put their bondholders in a subordinate position vis-à-vis FMPA. OUC's bond counsel is not going to sign off on that. We're working, we're trying to see what's going to happen there. We're waiting now on a response from FMPA's bond counsel, Mr. Art McMahon, which we expect to be in two-ish weeks, two weeks, possibly three weeks, before the end of May in any event, with the idea being to have a meeting of OUC, FMPA, and Vero Beach as soon as possible after that response comes in and see where we can get with that. We've also got to address the contingent liability obligations of the City of Vero Beach under the contracts, which is, of course, as FMPA has said, that is a backstop in the contract. And their bondholders want every possible protection they can get. That is the nature of bondholders, that is the nature of lenders, attorneys. They will see risk where you and I might look at the proposition and say, huh, really? But they do, and it's their job. And so we're going to have to sort that out. Next steps, for me, anyway, are to start working on the package of contract amendments that we're going to need. It's going to be pretty complex. I do have the commitment from Mr. Bryant that he will help me work on the package of amendments, which if, quotes all caps, big print, if approved, would accomplish what we want to accomplish, so that we could get it in front of the city commissions. No guarantees as to support, no guarantees that there would not be opposition from FMPA, whether from Mr. Bryant or anybody else in FMPA. No guarantees. But if we go nicely to the City of Olatcho and the City of Bushnell and the City of Clueston, and their city commissions, city councils vote to approve this, we would get what we want. So I'll be working on that. In the very near term, I'll be working on the OUC/FMPA things. And we're also waiting on stranded cost calculations from FMPA. I've talked with Mr. Bryant a couple of times about that, and I know Mr. O'Connor has talked to Mr. Guarriello about that. Best estimate is we will have that information by the end of the month. Fred suggested June. Mr. Guarriello told Jim May, and when I talked with Mr. Bryant about it on Friday, three days, four days ago, he said, I know that FMPA is working hard on that, so I'm sure that if Nick said May, it's probably going to be May. That's kind of my status report. I'm happy to answer any questions and stand up here as long as you all want me to.
Well, I think what we should do, Mr. Wright, is questions from city council are appropriate and will limit, and to the city manager, and will limit questions. But any of the city council that wants to ask questions, it's an appropriate time to do so.
No, I had my opportunity earlier.
I'm good.
I just have one comment, if I can. Given the public's appetite for this subject, I would just impress upon you to please document your actions and your work. I'm sure, you know, in the future, it will be pored over and inspected in great detail. So I would just ask that you please leave a good history of what you're doing.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mrs. Turner?
No questions at this time. Thank you very much, and I do apologize that I was late in attending the meeting, is that I was visiting with Mr. Wright. Thank you.
Is Mr. Comment or Mr. O'Connor, any comments from you?
No, I think Mr. Wright has pretty well condensed the issue into three items that are going to be our challenge going forward. Identifying the stranded cost, and we have one of three elements that is supposed to be being quantified now, so hopefully by the end of May, we will get that. The second is the contingent liability. Mr. Wright and I have talked about some options on that, but we still have to make sure that those options would be legal. But we are still pursuing, and we understand that's going to be another major challenge. And the OUC/FMPA issue on the transfer agreements, obviously, are going to be another one of those challenges that we have. But as Chef said, that he has talked to FMPA, if we can, and Fred has agreed that he's going to help us put this package together, whether he endorses it or not is another issue, but at least it would give us something to go forward with to their board of directors as well as to the independent cities.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wright. For the public, there is a letter from OUC dated April 30th, just so that you have the date that we've been talking about, so you know the date of the document. I have no further questions. I think, thank you for coming, and we look forward to your next visit, Mr. Igo's next visit, with anticipation.
Thank you. So do I.
Mrs. Brundage?
Good morning. Good morning, everyone, and welcome, Mr. Wright, to the team. Hi, John. I'm just here today really to deliver a very brief message to you all as far as, so everyone's on the same page as to who's doing what at this point. There's been a lot of twists and turns over the last four-plus years. It's really hard to believe that it's been more than four years since the leadership of this city, including Vice Mayor Kramer and council members Turner and Fletcher, invited FPL to help you find a way to reduce your electric costs. For your utility customers, we offered to purchase the City of Vero Beach's electric utility system, and as all five of you sitting up there know, we have been working diligently to complete the transaction and bring lower electric rates to Vero Beach, to both its residents and its businesses. But you also know that this process has not been without great challenges, as Mr. Wright has outlined. The city's contractual obligations with the Florida Municipal Power Agency remain the greatest hurdle to completing this sale. And FPL has worked tirelessly with the city to find a solution that is truly win-win for all parties. We've worked with the city and with FMPA over the last four years to try to create some win-win solutions. We've expended countless resources and countless man-hours. Several proposals have been put forward to the FMPA that would not disadvantage FMPA members or their bondholders. But not only has FMPA not approved these proposals, they will not even meet with FPL to continue to work on these proposals. And this is extremely, extremely disappointing to us. So I wish Mr. Wright the best of luck, Mr. Igo, and we're certainly here to help them and assist them in whatever way we can. But at this point, I'm really here to let you know that FPL has done absolutely all it can do in this process at this point to move this deal forward, to help you with exit your contracts from the FMPA. If you are successful doing that, you still, of course, have a willing buyer, a buyer that can proudly claim over the last five years running to have the lowest residential electric bill in the state, rates that will save this community more than $20 million a year. In fact, this afternoon, I'm meeting with one of the customers of Vero Beach Electric at their request to show them savings for them that would be in excess of half a million dollars a year if this Vero Beach Electric customer were an FPL customer today. These savings are available and will be available to all the customers of Vero Beach Electric if we can get this done. You know, FPL still firmly believes the sale can be completed. We continue to believe that motivated parties, working in good faith, can get this transaction done. But at this point in time, you know, you, city, you are in the driver's seat right now in order to get this done, and we're certainly here to assist in any way we can. But it's going to be up to the leadership of this city to persuade FMPA to allow you to exit your contractual obligations, your contracts with them. And I just wanted to say that we will be here to assist in whatever way we can, but we have done everything that we can at this point. And hopefully, we will be able to get this done, motivated parties working in good faith. We'll see, remains to be seen, but I wanted to make sure that you knew that we have sort of just taken that position we've discussed. We've realized we've done what we can do. There's been proposals put forward, several of them, that would not jeopardize the FMPA members or bondholders, but we can't do anything more. They won't meet with us, and they've not agreed to those proposals. So hopefully, you'll continue to get creative, push forward, and we can welcome you all to the FPL family before the next four years are up. So I'm just, I'm here if you have any questions of us, but it's really, it's really in your hands. I may be having questions of you in the future.
This comment, we will be calling on you. We are committed. And for the public, we signed a contract last year, well, it was February 16th, and under that contract, the city is obligated, and the contract is binding, to use its best effort and close the contract. In other words, the contract is still out there and binding between the two parties. Speaking only for myself, I would expect we are going to be taking you up, as we have in the past, into the future to get this done. With that said, any questions or comments by city council? Mrs. Turner?
Just wanted to thank FPL for hanging in there with us in the past four years, which certainly has not been easy for their dedication of time and resources in supporting Vero's efforts to extricate ourselves from these contracts.
We'll continue to do so. If you need us, you know where to find us.
Thank you very much.
Well, please be present, as you have been, as we continue on this road. We expect to see you here. All right, we'll open it for a general public comment. Mr. Igo, if you have any comments? Mr. Igo, if you have any comments, or if city council has any questions for you, we would certainly, Mrs. Turner brings it forward. That's certainly appropriate at this point in time. And you might want to make a comment. Go ahead.
Sure. I don't have any prepared remarks. Welcome. Thank you for asking me to the podium there. It's been a challenging road. It's been a difficult road. You know, as we know, I don't really understand how the $52 million offer fell apart. I was kind of mystified by FMPA's rejection of its, of FMPA's acceptance of its offer, because the conditions that Pat Bryant spoke about were something that we've been talking about all along. You know, ultimately, we wanted, we were going to need the support of FMPA management with whatever package Chef and I are able to put together to present to the members. There has to be some agreement on the contingent consideration that the city has been offering. And, you know, we need to get to an agreement with FMPA on that. So that part mystified me. But in OUC, you know, the attorney, Chris Browder, had mentioned a couple of months ago that there were some issues that he was concerned about with respect to OUC's existence as a wholesale provider of power and their own bonds. We didn't know the details until we saw that letter recently. But Chef has taken the lead on that in communicating with FMPA and OUC. And after Mr. McMahon, their bond counsel response, we'll have an idea whether there's a path for trying to find some resolution of the concerns that OUC has and still satisfy FMPA's need to have OUC assume the obligations of the city under the power purchase contracts. It remains a challenge, and we have had meetings with, on the phone with Chef and Jim and Wayne. And I primarily want to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts. We're going to work in cooperation with Chef. We're happy to have him on board. And we'll do whatever the city wants to help you facilitate closing of the transaction.
John, thank you. And the comments and questions from city council, I entertain them.
None here.
Mrs. Turner.
Yes, Mr. Igo. There has been some discussion about what have we done in these past few months? And I think the public may not be aware of the many contracts and legal issues that we have gone through, those hurdles in the past few years, as we've worked through the sales contract with FPL, you know, division of assets and personnel issues and Indian River forms and all the other different things. Could you give the public just an, you know, I know, just kind of a little synopsis of some of the many things that we have accomplished in this past time?
Yeah, I don't know how I got on Mr. Schuman's bad side. But, I mean, the potshots he's taken at us in this process have been unbelievable. But that's not really your question. We were, we were going down a path, and Jim O'Connor and Wayne, and we agreed that we should try one step at a time as the proposals morphed. If you want to go back to, the original contracts provide for the private purchase of the power by FPL. We all had stumbling blocks there in the negotiation of what the IRS, whether there should be an IRS letter ruling, what the IRS letter ruling request would look like, and who would draft it. There was disagreements between the tax attorneys on both sides. So we all said, you know, maybe we can get this done without a private purchase. Maybe we can find either OUC or FMPA would agree to purchase, assume the obligations. We won't have to deal with the IRS letter ruling. So that was a different tact. And at some point, it looked like the best strategy was going to be for FPL to work with FMPA and to find a way to satisfy FMPA and to get it done. And that took months and months and months of back and forth. And we thought we would get, we were going to get there because if we could have gotten there with FMPA, paying money to FMPA for the obligations on the power purchase contracts, then we wouldn't have to worry about OUC's concerns. We wouldn't have to worry about the private purchase. It took a long time. We were kind of on the sidelines while those negotiations were happening. And unfortunately, they fell apart. So we're back to hoping that OUC's expressed interest in taking it all on can be realized. And we don't know what that's going to cost yet. We hope, I believe it's going to be less than $52 million, maybe in the, actually, there was a number published, $41 million, I think was the number expressed. And if that works, it'll save a lot, it'll save money that we thought at the last meeting, the city was going to have to find a way to pay a portion of it. It's been a frustrating ordeal, and it's been a challenging transaction. There's a lot of moving parts. I totally understand FMPA's concern about the bondholders. It's a legitimate concern. We just feel that there's got to be some way to satisfy the bondholders, the trustees, and all of the members and accommodate the city's desire to pay. So, kind of rambling, but I'm just giving the feedback that you asked for. I haven't given up. I hope that we can find a way to get this done. And Chef has brought some new energy. And he's, I think he's going to, if we can get this done, he's going to help us get it done.
Mrs. Turner, does that answer your question, or do you want to pull more information out?
I just think part of it was that, the only successful sale that they've had at FMPA transferring power was with Homestead after the hurricanes. And the first thing that happened was that the city of Homestead met with Kissimmee, and they worked out a deal. And that is the process that Vero Beach in this, with FPL did. The first thing we did was we sat with FPL and worked out a purchase arrangement, that that had to be done before going to FMPA and to start working these issues. We had to have that to take to them, so.
Yes, and that was a strategy discussed with members of council and with Jim O'Connor early on. I know we've taken some, people have taken some heat for that. But you need to, you know, you need to have a deal in place so that you can then figure out how to get the third-party approvals. And it is unfortunate that we didn't have the time. There was a lot of time pressure for getting that contract done. And we were going back and forth, and I was in communication with FMPA about the proposed assignment agreements. And at the time in the negotiations, we said, well, let's make sure FMPL and OUC are okay on these agreements, and then we'll talk to Fred and Jody and get it done. I wish that we had done it differently. I wish we had put everything on hold and talked to them. But that's not what happened. And I did speak with Fred and Jody. I was talking to them during the process. And I told them by phone, you know what, we're kind of out of time, and I really apologize for it. But they understood when I told them, before the contract was approved, that we knew we were going to have to speak with FMPA and negotiate the terms and most likely change the terms of the assignment and transfer agreements. Yes, we used the Homestead and Kissimmee contracts as models. But we got those contracts signed without the full input from FMPA because we just ran out of time. But with the knowledge that we were going to go back to FMPA and get their help in, and we're still there. We are going to go to FMPA. Chef is going to go to FMPA and try to get their help in crafting those amendments and the assignments so that they'll be acceptable to FMPA.
Thank you.
Any other? All right. Thank you, John. You know, in looking at this thing, Mrs. Turner alluded to something that didn't really get completely answered. But the amount of subcontracts, contracts, there has to be a contract with the people that the right-of-way goes over, Indian River Farms. It has, with the cellular provider, have to be contracts with them. The unionized employees have to be considered. Pensions have to be considered. When you get done with it, the amount, that work is done, is largely done. Ninety-five, the FAA, because there are facilities at the airport. And that work is largely done. So a lot of work has been done. A lot of valuable work has been done. We are where we are. But I in no way demean or diminish the necessity of the work. You know,
There is still some, there is some more work to be done in
I understand.
With respect to those approvals. But you're right. We have done a lot of work in advance.
Yeah, a privilege of an old man, I suppose. But, you know, one of the things we learn in life, if we had the chance to do something over, and that's what John has alluded to, we might do it a bit differently. But that foresees, you know, that's 2020 hindsight. We've run into things that we didn't fully understand. And certainly, I think John or myself or a great many of us might do it a bit differently. But I am not in any way critical of my, for myself, of the work that's been done. It was necessary. So thank you, and you're with us.
Okay. Yes, absolutely. Thank you, sir.
All right. I'll open it for general public comment. Who would like to come forward?
Morning. My name's Jay Hart. I'm a resident of Indian River County and longtime resident of city of Vero Beach. Last Friday, we had a forum at the Heritage Center on the high-speed rail. And we had represented for Florida East Coast Industries there. I know Mr. Kramer, I think, was there briefly, and I know Mr. O'Connor was there. And I thank you for attending. It was, I thought it was a very important meeting. The reason I'm here is I see that, and I'm aware, that the High Speed Rail Commission is due to sunset in June. And I see later on in the agenda, you're going to talk about that. And I hope that what you're going to talk about is maybe extending the work of that commission. I don't know if that's true or not. I just hope the work of that commission doesn't stop in June. I think there's a lot more work to do, obviously. I think they've done a great job of bringing forward information about the impacts of the high-speed rail. I think they've done a great job of actually informing our surrounding communities of some of those impacts. I think some of our surrounding communities are more involved now than they were before because of the work of this commission. So I appreciate the work they've done. I think it was, it was important. One of the reasons we had our forum, I think, was because of the work of that commission. So I hope that when you consider this later in the agenda, and I'm sorry I can't stay for that, that you will consider extending the work of that commission, because I do think it's very important. There's a lot of work to be done as far as this is concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
Counsel Charlie Wilson, 2134 Eighteenth Avenue, Vero Beach, city resident. What you just heard was the sound of us losing a valuable ally. And we've been worried about this for quite some time. I don't blame them a bit, you know, for stepping back away from this abyss. But what she said was very important. Motivated parties working in good faith. Those are two things, motivated and in good faith. FMPA is neither motivated, motivated or in good faith. There are some question about whether this council, and a majority of this council, is motivated and in good faith. There are three, I'm so glad that they're not giving up. But I can certainly understand that it is now time for different pathways. I have in the agenda for the county today, that's, there's two items on the county agenda today. And they are motivated and working in good faith for their constituents in that they are now taking the matter out of the hands of this city council and going their own direction. It is very clear to anyone else, we've been waiting a long time. There is absolutely no sense, I'm very glad that we're, that they haven't given up. I hope you, I wish you luck. I wish the new attorney good fortune. And I wish the council luck in proceeding with FMPA. But don't hold your breath. FMPA simply is not motivated, and they are not operating in good faith. So the county has asked three things, has looked at some alternatives. The Public Service Commission concerning changes in the territorial agreements, the Public Service Commission Farady-Heron complaint, and then antitrust issues having to do with the city's monopoly. There are three issues that we really need to be aware of. The first is the deteriorating asset we have of, called Vero Electric. Some of the blogger twins, and I understand Mr. Igo's concern when he reads Inside Slander newspaper, that it's kind of difficult to follow this whole thing. But it is, they're often asked the question of what happened to the original estimates. You know, you said it was 150 million, and we were going to get 60 million. What happened to all this, they keep saying. Well, the answer is, we lost it. We have, our asset has deteriorated over, since 2009, when I sat in, right there, and we invited FPNL to come, we tried getting into the OUC contract. Now, what we found, just to take a couple of examples, a $20 million penalty hidden in that contract. So one of the things they said just a few minutes ago is that what we have is a problem with the city of Vero Beach contracts. Well, you know something? Quit getting into these contracts. We've done it for years and years and years. And that brings up the second item, and that is the rights and responsibilities under the contract. You know, FMPA is always telling you about their rights under the contracts, but they don't say much about their responsibilities under their contract. And one of the things to remember when everybody's talking about, we have to honor these contracts, let's remember something. They also have a privilege, and that privilege is to operate as a monopoly. If they didn't have that privilege to operate as a monopoly, they could stay in business, and all the members of the IRNA and all the members of the Vero Beach employees can all stay on Vero Electric, and all the rest of us will leave. And we will, they can continue to be members of FMPA with a much, much smaller base. The fact is, is that they have certain responsibilities as a monopoly. And that speaks to what the county and Indian River Shores are both doing, and that is the antitrust provisions. Now, as I understand it, the latest FMPA dodge is having to do with the life of a plant, that our contingent liabilities is for the life of every plant that we have a responsibility to, that we have a partial interest in. What is the life of St. Lucy Nuclear Plant? Hundred years? 500 years? Do we really believe that a city council, this is true, that a city council, sitting in 1983, can subject the residents of this city to a contract for 100 years? 500 years? How long? And the fact is, is that negotiations have failed. And they have failed for just exactly what FPNL just said, motivated parties working in good faith. Well, you're not going to have that. So what do you do now? Well, let's do what does not require FMPA. I'm tired of talking to FMPA. We're not going to get them to agree to squat. So what we need to do then is go to an alternative. And there are some alternatives. One is litigation, which is where we're heading. I think we all know that. We should save a lot of money and just go there, because we're going to have to determine whether that contract is legal. Even if we reach an agreement, somebody's going to come along and end up questioning that question. So let's just go ahead. As a parallel path, you guys go ahead and keep working to try and talk to FMPA. But FMPA needs something called motivation. And I'm going to give you some ways to motivate. And that's what the county and Indian River Shores is doing, because they're leaving. And that is regulation with the Public Service Commission. The question of the territorial agreements, exactly what is the territorial, what is our territory? You know, I tried to look at that. And you know, did you know that we have sold part of our territory to FPNL in the past? I didn't know that. We have already sold, our territory used to go out to I-95, and we've sold territory, and we've traded territory with FPNL before. Did you know also that the city of Vero Beach's population is exactly the same today as it was in 1983? Exactly. So however, the number of customers has gone up. So when we signed a contract with FMPA, does that mean all of our new customers forever? However much the county grows, all the growth that takes place, they just get to keep collecting new, larger and larger numbers of people? There's no, there's no appreciation of that asset by the number of people? So you have regulation having to do with the territorial agreement. As far as I'm concerned, we can make the power plant and wherever the Indian River Neighborhood Association is, the territory, and they can be, they can be Florida, or they can be Vero Beach Electric. The second is competition. Part of the, part of the situation The second is competition. Part of the, part of the situation with having a monopoly, and they are now testing this in other states, and I read a great seventy-page report from the Public Service Commission the other day about testing competition. You know what? This is a really good place to test competition, where it is not the transmission and distribution that is sold, but it is the ability to buy from different suppliers. I think that's something we can, we can go forward to. And lastly is organization. You know, eventually the public gets tired of being told there's nothing that they can do. There's nothing we can do about Obamacare. There's nothing we can do about the train. There's nothing we can do about the electricity. We're tired of it. And so, one of the possible ways we have to do this is to organize ourselves as a public to what we tried to do several years ago, and we stepped back because of the negotiations, and that is make it illegal for the city of Vero Beach to be in the electric business. Okay? We did exactly the same thing with sand pumping, where the public rose up, they put a referendum on, and they said, "The city council of Vero Beach shall not engage in the electric sale and distribution of electricity." Okay? What are they going to do? You know, the point is, and one last issue, and that is, you can do this. So, my question is, why doesn't the city council do this? By a vote of the city council, you can put on a referendum that gets you, so that it is illegal for you to be in the electric business. If you three, if three of you won't do that, then it means that we have to get ten percent of the last voting public, which is a little over a thousand signatures, to put on the ballot that takes this completely out of the hands of all of you. Okay? So, my question to you is, are you motivated parties working in good faith? I understand the difference between pro-sale, anti-sale, and sort of soft sale. You know, that your soft sale is okay, if they just bring you a sale, you'll sign it, you know, but the key word here is motivated, working in good faith. Are you motivated? Because I am. I'm motivated enough to go to litigation, to organization, to regulation, all to take this forward. You can negotiate while we're doing this, but while you're negotiating, it's time we took this into our own hands. And so, my question to you is, number one, are you willing to vote for litigation? Are you willing to join the county and Indian River Shores in moving forward to litigation? That is the only way you're going to get to a motivated FMPA. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next person, please. I think the lady is next.
Yeah.
Lamar?
Good morning. My name is Lamar Nodjakamo. I'm a founding member of the American Coalition for Property Rights. I reside at five zero five one, Fourth Place, in Vero Beach, and my comments are regarding the sunset provision of the High-Speed Rail Commission. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, I respectfully ask you to reconsider your decision to end the High-Speed Rail Commission since their work has barely begun. As a native Floridian, I have lived most of my life in South Florida, having been born in Miami and later living in Pensacola and Fort Lauderdale. In two thousand and one, I moved to Vero Beach with my husband and six children and have never looked back. I fell in love with the laid-back, pristine, active, outdoor lifestyle, the fragrance of orange blossoms, the easy access to the bike paths and beaches, the unmatched sunsets and our priceless historical treasures, and the open spaces that define our enviable quality of life. We are well aware that the high-speed rail and freight trains will have the impact of a wrecking ball, destroying the very essence of our beautiful Treasure Coast communities to line the pockets of large corporations. The ambiance that draws people from all over the world to our Treasure Coast to relax, rejuvenate, and get away from it all will be replaced by the endless roar of high-speed trains. I escaped the noise pollution, the concrete jungles, the traffic congestion, the taxpayer nightmare of the Miami Metro Rail and the Tri-Rail, both of which are heavily taxpayer subsidized due to low ridership, only to be confronted with the ugly reality of a high-speed rail running through the heart of our beautiful Vero Beach. Homeowners and taxpayers have been intentionally kept in the dark concerning the environmental impacts, the frequency of the high-speed rail, and the resulting decrease in property values, leaving them without a voice in the process. Countless other considerations that taxpayers must have the opportunity to explore include, but are not limited to, the exponential increase in marine and automobile traffic congestion, the potential increase in crime and drug traffic, and the high probability of loss of business revenue resulting from the thirty-two high-speed trains and twenty freight trains per day barreling through our beautiful town. It is of the utmost importance that the Train Commission is able to continue its work tracking the developments of all aboard Florida, and that they are provided the necessary resources to see this investigative process through. The environmental impact study, if allowed to complete a thorough analysis, will be an invaluable resource to those who advocate for the train, those who are fighting to stop it, and to the city council. I urge you to keep the commission funded and operational as long as necessary to ensure full disclosure of the issues surrounding the high-speed rail. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Herron, please.
Good morning, Glenn Herron, nineteen sixty-four Gray Falcon Circle, Southwest. My comments are quite simple and be very brief. Do we, as a community, have an autonomous right to sell our electric utility? Does the city of Vero Beach, as an autonomous community, have a right to sell its electric utility? I believe the answer is yes, and the community has been loud and clear in what they asked to do. In the last referendum, which is now over a year ago, they said, "Sell to FPNL." They didn't say, "Lower the rates or stay in the electric business." They said, "Sell to FPNL." So, the next question is, does the FMPA have a right to tell us we can't sell? After thirty-one years of membership in the FMPA, having built cash, investments, and generation assets in that, in that organization, do we have a right to leave that organization after thirty-one years? I believe the answer is yes, because if we don't have that right, then we are not an autonomous community with a right to sell our utility. We, in fact, don't own our utility if that is the case. So, with that, I believe that the previous speaker is correct. We need a motivated city council, and we need a unified city council if we are to extricate ourselves from the FMPA, because this is all about the FMPA and our right to sell our own assets. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herron. Sir?
Good morning, counsel. Nice to see you guys again. I'm glad you made it back safely. I'm not sure if you were on vacation, but I hope you got some rest.
I was, but name and address.
(laugh) Stuart George, seven four six, Nineteenth Place, Vero Beach, Florida. So, I have additional questions, and as you guys know, I'm trying to understand a lot of the issues in the community. I consider myself on the path to getting a master's in Vero Beach, and you guys are my professors. So, Dean Winger, I have a couple of questions. One that I need to understand is, what is the relationship between FMPA and the city of Vero Beach? And by that, I mean, is this a vendor, service provider, client relationship? Is this a corporate shareholder relationship? What exactly is this relationship that the city is in? How is it defined?
Well, normally, we take input, don't answer questions, but I think that's a good question, and I would rather Mr. O'Connor answer the question, if that would be, or Mr. Comet.
I think it's a combination of a relationship. One is that they are a provider of electric generation, i.e. the kilowatts. The other is a corporate contractual agreement where we own pieces of plants that FMPA has part ownership of. We own part of those plants, and so therefore, it's really a combination of the two. I think it could really be sort of visualized as a co-op. We are part of a co-op, and this co-op, this organization which we have a membership on the board of directors, went out and built a plant, but they also bought into pieces of plants. For example, they bought into OUC Stanton One and Stanton Two. They bought into Saint Lucy Nuclear Plant. They bought a piece, a percentage of that, and then they sold their percentage off to the various cities who wanted to buy a percentage of that. And, for example, we own like one percent of Saint Lucy Nuclear Plant, but it's managed for us through FMPA.
Okay, so, I can visualize the relationship as a sort of a co-op.
And we have a, we have a city member or a city council, or it doesn't have to be a member of a city council, but each city who's a member of FMPA, which there's something over thirty, has a director of FMPA, so it is indeed a co-op. When you look at FMPA to some degree, FMPA is at least one-thirtieth or some such number of us.
Okay. Something interesting that I saw, and I hope this is recent, that there was a request by Ms. Turner for public records, request in, I guess, the calculations of certain numbers. And I guess my, I apologize for questions, but I'm curious, in this relationship to understand the internals of the FMPA's proceedings, negotiations, does it, does it require a public records? Are we not part of this entity where we understand what's going on internally?
I can't answer the question.
The answer, I believe, and Ms. Turner obviously could answer it better than I, but in the state of Florida, when a council member, in some cases, asks for information, they'll do it under the public records law, and I think it's sort of our culture that you sort of do that. In the FMPA board, that same, obviously that same activity takes place, and so she made that request under the public records. Therefore, it clarifies that any and all documents related to that are supposed to be public and made available to the requesting party.
Okay, so this was not a situation where certain information was being withheld? This is just a normal process for requesting information?
Well, they didn't, they didn't necessarily answer the question, and they took it as proprietary by a vendor that supplied information to FMPA. So, there's a question now as to the proprietorship of that vendor, and which is the ownership of the documentation of how they made the calculations.
Okay, interesting.
One more question.
One more question. Related to conversation last time regarding the forty-four thousand power contract obligation that Mr. O'Connor educated me on, if, if I or a certain percentage, if I buy one of the dealerships that are sitting empty, and I turn it into a development center, and I put solar power panels on that building, and other members, other business, other business members in the community does the same thing, and eventually that builds up, and we say, "Well, we can use the solar power," does that somehow, because of this obligation, if we reduce the thirty-four thousand by fifty percent, by forty percent of customers because we're using solar power, what does that do to the obligation to the contract?
It really has no impact, because they still retain their customer relationship with the utility. So, therefore, if you've got solar panels using that, and you put windmills, typically speaking, you cannot supply twenty-four-seven every hour of the day. If, but if you could, that would be fine, but you would still be retained as a, as a customer of the utility. Now, under that, let's say that everybody in the entire city went to solar panel, and we lost those sales. What we would have to do is restructure, because we have debt service that we have to pay. For example, the city owes about forty million dollars in debt that we have, just ourselves. We still would have to, as my finance director keeps reminding me, revenues have to exceed expenditures. Each one of those customers are still relying on us for backup. So, for example, if your solar panel goes down for some reason, you would still expect your lights to come on, so that meter would provide that backup. And if everybody was into the solar panel business, we probably would have to rearrange how we structured our rate structures.
Okay, just real quick, what does that do to the FMPA obligation?
We still have to make those payments. We have to buy thirty-eight megawatts, as an example, of our baseload from FMPA. It's a take or pay. We send them a check whether we take the power or not.
So, the answer to the question is take or pay. In other words, we pay for the thirty-eight megawatts, one way or another. We don't take them. We still pay for them.
So, if the, if half of the ratepayers decide they want to use some other alternative power, the city is still obligated to pay for the thirty-four thousand, even if the citizens' ratepayers decide we don't, we don't want it?
And, you know, we'll end it here, but
Yeah.
One caveat, the way the city power supply works is there are three elements to it. The first, for forty-eight megawatts or thirty-eight megawatts, however you want to look at it, forty-eight is from FMPA. That's the first draw. The second one is for whatever we need is from OUC, which is usually more than we take from FMPA. The third, if that doesn't suffice, is we run the plant, which I think you know, we almost never run the plant, because OUC's got extra power. So, what happens is, whatever we need in the way of power, they provide it. So, we don't get into the take or pay unless we have no requirement of OUC. In other words, OUC is the first to drop demand. That's probably enough on your master's degree today. I have to move the meeting ahead.
That's fine, that's fine. It's ongoing class.
We'll look forward to your next three questions. I think they're educational for the public, and normally we don't, in a sense, take questions, but I think the more understanding we get, our job, part of our job as legislators is not only to make wise judgments, but part of, and to listen to the public and do what you want, but part of it is to educate the public, and I think you're doing precisely that, and I thank you for it.
Correct, and I think that's important in the climates, that to keep the education and the lines of communication going. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, if Mr. George ever has a question, because there are other elements, for example, capacity charges we pay for, we can go through those if you want to give me a call, and if nothing else, you could come to a council meeting and say, "This is what I've experienced in my conversation with either myself or Tom Richards at the power plant. Be very glad to give you a tour."
Tom is in the back corner.
Thank you very kindly. That was actually going to be my next step.
Tom, you're going to get away. Mr. Gafanti, please. Come forward, sir.
Joseph Gafanti, four forty-one Holly Road in the city of Vero Beach. If the gentleman who just spoke were to ask me what the FMPA was all, was all about, I'd gently tell him that it was nothing more than a money laundering operation, taking money from the city of Vero Beach ratepayers and doing whatever, wherever it goes. That's what the FMPA that goes for the OUC. As I said over fifteen years ago, that's what the Vero Beach power system is. It's a money laundering operation. According to this paper, the three-two-nine-six-three paper, comes out once a week, they cover, they had an article a week, a couple of weeks ago, about the new attorney that FMPA asked the city of Vero Beach to hire. I consulted with a couple of attorneys, and they told me that this is beyond bizarre. It's at least fascinating to what you people did. FMPA can't get along with our transactional attorney, and they decide to not communicate with him, or them. And we, they were our attorneys, and the public may be based on Mark and Uncle Milty's inside-the-outhouse offering propaganda sheet, public might believe that FPL are the bad guys. They're the ones that are, we're trying to negotiate with for a sale. We're trying to deal with them, and there's no reason for us to get in a fight with Florida Power and Light. The bad guys, and there are bad guys, are FMPA and OUC. What's interesting is that the Indian River Shores people are, I think, well, I know they've hired an attorney. My best wish is that they file suit, because there will be the point of depositions. And a whole bunch of people in the city of Vero Beach, over at OUC and FMPA, are going to be in trouble if Indian Beach over at OUC and FMPA are going to be in trouble if Indian River Shores hires the right attorney. I don't know if there's one capable of doing what I would do. I'm not an attorney, but what the questions that I would ask are the questions that Brian Hetty would ask. But there's a whole bunch of people in trouble now, or will be in trouble, if Indian River Shores files suit. And if you remember, I told you not too long ago that I consulted with, I have a lot of friends, and even some of them are attorneys. And you remember me saying, there will, he told me, there will be lawsuits, and there will be lawsuits. Let me just say this. You spent a million and a half dollars, four years, building a road, and you got there, and the bridge is out. The big obstacles, which should have been determined four years ago, or three and a half years ago, by your transactional attorneys, were the obligations that we have with OUC and FMPA. You did have an out, though. You could have called for an investigation. At a one meeting, you were going to investigate, and this guy, have to write these down, Fletcher, and I don't know who else was there, maybe Kramer, were there, and they said, yeah, let's have an investigation. And then, the next meeting, we don't want an investigation. So somebody got to you. I have to surmise all this stuff because I'm not on the inside. So you got, you build this road, spent a million and a half dollars to get around FPL, and you got there, and the bridge is out, and it can't be reconstructed. And it's wishful thinking that without, without a whole bunch of money, we're going to be able to sell this plant. We're not, it ain't going to happen. So good luck to you. And the guy that spoke before me, if he wants to get an education, I wouldn't get it from a politician. You want the truth. Good day.
Thanks for your comments. Is there anybody else?
Hi there. My name is Sean R. Frost. My address is sixty-seven hundred seventy-seventh Street, but I operate the Green Patrol, which operates within the city limits, doing event recycling and now composting. And it is also International Compost Awareness Week, and there was a proclamation over at the county. I just wanted to say two words that those in public service don't hear enough. Those words are thank you, especially on the heels of some of the debate today. I want to say thank you for your proactive stance in forming the High Speed Rail Commission. And I would hope, I see that it's an agenda item, and I would hope that you would continue supporting the High Speed Rail Commission, because as someone who grew up here, lifelong resident, it's essential to keeping Vero Vero, to bring that back. But I just wanted to say thank you, and that I support smart spending as much as the next person. And I really do feel that this is one of those very rare cases where having a committee or a commission has the potential to save millions in fees that we may end up getting a check for down the road, as far as putting barricades up or things along those lines. So I hope you'll consider that as you weigh the options, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Next person, please.
Good morning, Council. My name's Daniel Masson. I live at sixty-four Lepatrees Lane in Vero Beach. I've come up here today. I got my electric bill the other day, and I guess maybe for the, not the first time, but I decided to do a little research on it. My electric bill was for twelve-hundred-and-five kilowatt-hours. My bill is a hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty cents. I am one of thirty-three thousand and some customers you have, electric customers. If I had FPL, that same bill would be one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. A savings of forty-four dollars, roughly. My wife and I have no children at home. We have grandchildren and children in town, but we have no children at home, and they come over occasionally. We're very frugal. I have LED lights and fluorescent light fixtures. I don't use incandescent lights. We keep our air on, on the high side and, and use the pool. So we're frugal. We don't use a lot. And there are people in this community with children, and they're elderly, and they don't have efficient appliances, and they can't afford them. If you drive around this city and look at these people, like I've mentioned once before, and really look and consider what these people are going through, it, it kind of helps to realize where we are today and why we're where we are today, and why we are doing this, and what motivates us to do this. My wife and I, in a year's time, would save five hundred dollars or so. Five hundred dollars, which we would probably spend on grandkids, or something. But there are people who five hundred dollars means a lot to. It means they can buy a pair of shoes, new shoes. They can buy medicines, or they can, and, and as a council person, you cannot ignore these people. That's your job, is counsel people. There's been a lot of talk about all the other cities and the rates, and, and if I go over three minutes, let me know. I'm trying to speed it along. I try to respect your, your time limit. I went to the FMEA website, and I have a list of thirty-three member cities. There's been talk of this city or that city. Compare Vero, like, we're going to be, Lakeland? Lakeland has its own generation, modern generation. They don't buy from FMPA. We are never going to compete with Lakeland. Lakeland may be competitive, and good for Lakeland. Lakeland is a well-managed utility. Good for them. The residents aren't rising up against Lakeland City because they have competitive rates. Vero Beach will never be competitive, and you all know it. You can throw out that misinformation, the ones that do, but it is a fallacy. When I went to Marine Corps in nineteen-seventy, I remember on the wall of their office where I signed up, it said, we don't promise you a rose garden. And you all probably should see that same sign when you swear the oath here, that nobody promises you a rose garden. And when I got out in nineteen-seventy-three, I had done a lot of growing up and realized how true that statement was. This is a, this is a battle. It really is. And as, as council members, I urge you to not give up. I urge you to stay the fight, keep it. Don't give up. Don't ever give up. Do the right thing. And, and these rates that FPL have are what this city deserves and the ratepayers of this area. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Ma'am?
Are you taking comments on All Aboard Florida? My name is Ellen Gower. I live at seventy-four thirty-five Cypress Bend Manor in Vero Beach, three-two-nine-six-six. All Aboard Florida, even the name of this undesirable project is inaccurate. It's clearly not All Aboard if there are no stops in the Treasure Coast. There are no tangible rewards for us, only a vague, unenforceable promise that someday we might get a station. Ah, but who's the "we"? Stewart, Fort Pierce, Vero? And do we in Vero even want a stop here? In the meantime, while we wait to learn whether a stop here may be in our future, five years down the road, we get the noise, traffic jams while cars are stopped at railroad crossings, environmental damage, not to mention safety issues, all jammed down our throats with not much advance notice to give our Vero Beach City Council time to consider how it will pay for dealing with all of the above-mentioned issues, or whether it should. Indian River Counties and Vero Beach's slow-growth policies have made this area idyllic. It is quiet. It's quiet, low-growth, low-density features are what attracted many of us to settle here. Now is not the time to do an end run around many years of hard-fought, sensible land-use planning. Our elected state officials may not care about our area as they move forward to build an Orlando station and the Cocoa to Orlando tracks, but there are many of us who certainly hope our elected local officials will say no to the funding needed to abate the noise, traffic, tie-ups, environmental and safety issues. If another, if enough Treasure Coast localities join in saying no to paying for these items and write to the Federal Railroad Administration, letting it know that they want neither the train nor the many problems it will bring to our communities, maybe, just maybe, doing so will bring pressure to bear on the FRA to deny All Aboard Florida's 1.6 billion loan request. In the meantime, we citizens can also bombard the FRA with letters saying we are not on board with All Aboard Florida and ask that it not grant the loan request. Letters to the Transport, to Federal Railroad Administration can be directed to John Winkle, Transportation Industry Analyst, Federal Railroad Administration, twelve-hundred New Jersey Avenue Southeast, Washington, D.C., twenty-five ninety. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for your comments. Are there any more comments from the floor? Seeing not a close public comment, would, what's the pleasure of city council? Do you want to press on fifteen minutes, or would you like to take a break? It's up to you.
Go ahead and get it done.
Okay. Moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda, is there any item that anyone would like to pull or discuss?
I would like the city manager just to give us an update on D2, the final payment for power plant fuel tank removal and cleaning.
All right, we're going to pull D2 further, and then we'll approve the other two.
Move to adopt as remanded.
Second.
Ms. Turner, is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. All right, D2. Have at it.
As you know, this was a project that was brought on by an inspection requirement that we had to inspect our tanks. And so we went out with an RFP. We decided that we could empty one of the fuel tanks and sell the fuel out of there that was really not necessary because oil was not something we had used in the recent times. So when we did that, we bundled that in with the cleaning of the tanks. The city realized a, a net proceeds of around eight-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars after the cost of the inspections were performed. By the way, the inspection showed that we had no contamination, no issues, and it was a pretty clean bill of health on that operation.
And where in the budget will that money go?
Stays, stays with the electric because it is an asset of the electric.
Thank you.
And for the comment, a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing no opposition, it passes five-nothing. With city council's permission, I would like to go three, eight, four, and handle the issues that Eric Manager has. I also would like him to talk about one of the important things that's happening in Vero Beach, and his time is precious right now as he organizes our premier event that we're so very, very proud of. So if, is it agreeable with you that I skip ahead?
Sure.
No objection, please, Commissioner.
All right. Eric, you're on. Whatever you want. Here we are.
You need to, Mayor, you need to read the title of the resolution.
All right. A resolution authorizing the city of Vero Beach, Florida to enter into a supplemental joint participation agreement with the state of Florida, the Department of Transportation, to construct Bart Light West GA Apron Phase Three FDOT four-two-two four-eight-nine dash one dash ninety-four dash oh-one, requested by the airport director, who stands in front of us. Captain?
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning to all the members of the council. Jim, I just wanted to briefly, you know, just briefly go over this for you guys. The, the supplemental joint participation that you have in front of you is another piece of the funding puzzle that we're working together with the Florida Department of Transportation. This is piece number two. We are expecting another piece of the grant to come in fiscal twenty-fifteen from the state of Florida, which would be July first of this year. And then after that, it would have some additional funding. So we're just asking to accept this grant to begin working on our general aviation apron over at the west side of the airport. We've been working on this since twenty-eleven, and as I said, it's kind of piecing it together, the funding. The good part of this is we're working toward a public-private partnership with our FBOs, our fixed base operators at the airport, to get their, their funding in addition to, to the state, so that we can, we can build these general aviation ramps in front of their, in their term, their hangars. So staff would recommend approval and acceptance of the, this grant from the Florida Department of Transportation.
All right. Is there public comment on this one? Seeing no public comment, comments from the council or a motion? This, you see pick.
Move to adopt as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we'll call. I'm sorry.
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes. Mr. Eric, would you now talk about the air show? I think that's really appropriate.
Love to do that, and thank you for the opportunity. There's a six-member board plus me that are sitting every week, putting this air show together for the community. And Todd Houter with MBV Engineering is heading that up, and the group has done just a great job. You probably heard Marty Zickert on the radio this morning on Bob Sues. He's been on every week talking about it. I've had the opportunity myself to, to talk a little bit. And the reason we're so excited, I hope the folks are watching the TV, is because of the U.S. Navy Blue Angels, which are featured performers at this show. So this coming weekend, I don't know, this will probably record, and people may actually watch the city council meeting after this weekend, but for those who are watching live, May tenth and eleventh is the air show, the twenty-fourteen Vero Beach Air Show. We hope that folks will come out. I mean, this is a huge opportunity, I think, to have the Navy Blue Angels right here in Vero Beach. We've never had them in Vero Beach, never had them in the Treasure Coast, never been at the Stewart Air Show. This is the first time that we've had the elite Navy jet team here, so we're really happy to have them. Would recommend to folks that want to come to the air show, please go online, veroairshow.com, and get your tickets in advance. We do expect a crowd. I'm getting calls from Tampa, from Palm Beach, Orlando. You know, there are, there are folks that actually follow the Blue Angels, and because of the sequestration, you know, last year where there was a lot of pent-up demand, I think we're getting a lot of folks that really want to love to come to Vero Beach. It's a smaller community. I think our hotels are already filling up if they're not already full. And it's really good for a shot in the arm for the community. We're happy to have them come. We'd love folks to buy their tickets early, come early, come out to Forty-third Avenue, because that's the best access point to, on the west side of the airport to come in. And gates open at eight o'clock. I want to put that out because we do, hope that folks will come a little early. I know it's a long day, but for twenty dollars, you know, twenty-five dollars at the gate, when you're spending ninety-nine dollars at Disney for a whole day, here you're going to have just, there's going to be food, there's going to be static demonstrations, there'll be, of course, the performers, which will start, and the, the final act of the day will be the Blue Angels, both Saturday and Sunday. So bring your mom out for Mother's Day and enjoy a good time. And thank you, Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to say.
Well, Eric, some of the other things are going on, the Blue Angels. Then what time do you expect the Blue Angels?
We expect them to come in a little early to kind of check out the site, but they will be there both days, Saturday and Sunday, to do their performance. We, we are already starting to hear from Blue Angel Number Eight, which is the coordinator of the whole event, and he is making sure that we have everything lined up. There's a lot of details that I don't want to go into now, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't, you probably wouldn't be surprised to see all the background things that are going on at the airfield right now with a multitude of volunteers. We have close to eight hundred volunteers, is, is what I understand. And, and we do appreciate the community really stepping up. It's a small community, so eight hundred people.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's really good. And we've had some good sponsorships. We certainly appreciate what Piper has done because they are the presenting sponsor, and they've really stepped up to the plate to give us the seed money, to get it going, to get the marketing. And turns out that right now, we have almost sold out all of the, all of the Barnstormer Chalet tickets, which is the tent, you know, that you can buy in advance, the VIP-type tent, except there's some left on Sunday, I think. And if, if anybody is watching now, they can go online right away and maybe get those. Reserve seating is still available also, and of course, general, general admission tickets. But it's all, it's all available for, for folks to come out. And, you know, we, we hope that we'll have good weather. It looks really good from what I can see in the forecast. I should knock wood. But we're, we're looking at some puffy clouds, good old Florida weather, and about eighty-five degrees. Bring an umbrella to put over your head in case it is sunny and you don't like sunscreen. You know, bring a chair. The chairs are, or you can bring your own chair. Don't bring a cooler, but you can bring a chair to sit on. I don't want to go over all the details, but... I don't want to go over all the details, but to answer your question, I can't really tell you when exactly the Blue Angels will be here and when they'll perform. We're still waiting for them, to see them fairly soon, but you will see them overhead in a little bit of advance of the.
What other things are there at the airfield, though? I mean, exhibits and demonstrations and so on?
We have a large number of static displays. We have, you know, just about something for everybody, is what I'd like to say, whether you're a warbird or a vintage aircraft type of connoisseur. If you like jets, we'll have some A4s there, you know, and some of the DC-3, you know, little aircraft, experimental aircraft that folks bring up that have been working on for years. You'll see a lot of things there in the statics, and then also we have a kid's zone for the kids. If you come a little early, there'll be rock climbing and a zip line and things like that for the kids to enjoy before the actual flying happens.
Mr. Fletcher, you're our air.
I have been waiting a long time to see the Angels. I haven't seen them for probably 25 years. This is a big deal. And I worked all my life in the aerospace industry, retired out of McDonnell Douglas, and this is a one-time event. I mean, it's not a one-time event. Actually, they're going to return, we hope.
We hope so.
But don't miss this. This is going to be really exciting. And you're right, there's a lot to do out there other than, you're going to be walking. Bring some comfortable shoes because you're going to be walking on the apron for a long time, looking at all the displays. There are a lot of stuff out there to take a peek at.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Eric. All right, we'll now move to 3B1, which I will read. It's an ordinance, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida requesting any and all involved government units and public agencies to require All Aboard Florida and Florida East Coast Industries to pay all costs associated with the All Aboard Florida project and its impact on local communities, and that any governmental financial assistance to be provided to the All Aboard Florida project, if any, be only by secured loans at no less than market interest rates. Requesting extended review comment period for the All Aboard Florida project draft environmental impact statement, requesting that All Aboard Florida hold public hearings on the draft environmental impact statement in Indian River County, Florida, providing for an effective date requested by City Council. Mrs. Turner, you are more involved in this than the rest of us, your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I've been working with our Assistant Attorney Peggy Lyons on revising this resolution. And what you'll find, we have added a whereas clause on historic buildings. Went into extensive research, and I guess everybody was impressed to see the number of historic buildings that were along that corridor. We also included 180, requesting 180-day review of the EIS, which is consistent with what the county had requested, as well as a venue for a public hearing here within Vero Beach area. So those are the three key changes to this resolution since you've seen it.
All right, before we have council comments, I have a couple. We've had a lot of public comments. Is there anybody that hasn't spoken? If you've spoken, we've heard you, we understand. Is there anybody additional that would like to talk about this? Mr. Day, come forward.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Council. Ken Day, 1846 21st Avenue, High Speed Rail Chairman. Thank you, Mrs. Turner. I talked to Mrs. Turner. She's included some of the recommendations that we talked about over the phone. Thank you very much. And probably, I guess, about a week, hopefully, number one, all of you will please approve this resolution. Mr. Posey, Congressman Posey is coming to town, and through the channels, I'll be able to have a word with Mr. Posey, and I'm going to hand, and I know he's going to get a copy of this, but I would like to hand him a copy of this resolution. There's some pertinent points in there that I just want to point out to Mr. Posey because we are going to need the help of his office, along with Congressman Murphy's office, to get the comment time extended, either an additional 45 days or the full 180 days. That's still up in the air. There are certain individuals that will sign off on it. It is extremely complicated and complex, like with a lot of things with government, but I would urge you to please pass this, and I hope that all of you would agree to it. Thank you very much for your time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Further comments? Seeing no further comments, a close public comment. Staff comments, I skipped over. Are there any staff comments?
No, sir. As you can see, it's requested by the council. We fully support it. I think, as Ms. Turner said, that the city attorney's offices work with their own developing of this, and I believe we've had input from the majority of the council.
I have only one, Ms. Gower brought to mind, and it's a rhetorical question, not a question of her, of course. You know, if I was Florida East Coast Industries, or if I was Fortress Capital, I'd be tempted to run one commuter train a day, because we keep hearing, well, it's not going to stop. Frankly, this is a bad thing, even if you had one train.
I concur wholeheartedly, Mr. Mayor. I see nothing to support this.
Would it make any difference to us if we had one train a day and we still had this thing cutting our town into, and we still had the noise and all the problems? It wouldn't make any difference to me at all. It's kind of curious to me that they haven't offered that. You know, one of the things about this whole thing is that when the railroad came in 1892, they came through here in 1893, they were granted about 500,000 acres, if my memory's correct. There's a wonderful book about it, The Last Train to Paradise, and it talks about Henry Flagler. And the interesting thing about that whole thing is that they still own large parcels of downtown Miami, which they want to develop. And the interesting thing is they own land in Palm Beach and also in Fort Lauderdale that's developable. So what happens is Fortress Capital, who controls this land, has the ability to move people back and forth between Orlando, one of our prime destinations in Florida, we're glad to have it, I guess, and Miami, which I'm certainly glad to have. And so, you know, one of the motivations on this entire thing is of no help to us. So I just make those two asterisks. I, you know, I think people who think this is going to fail, it doesn't have to make money if they make enough money on the land development, which is where Florida East Coast Industries has been, except for their bankruptcy over all the years. The second thing is I don't care whether we, I'd like to have local trains, but not at the price of having this monster. Anyway, I open it to council comment. You know what I think. Mr. Fletcher?
Move to adopt as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have to have a roll call.
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, if I could just make a quick comment. You know, the thing that I see about this is, and I really don't want to have to vilify All Aboard Florida on this, but I think what happens is that we get an awful lot of these industries that come through, and the other one that comes to mind was the concrete plant that came in. Somewhere along in the line, we've kind of got to get together what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. Otherwise, we're just going to keep fighting little companies that pop up here and there. It would be really helpful to industries to know what's acceptable in Indian River County and what's not acceptable in Indian River County. But, you know, that's a future thing. I just hope on the radar screen, people would keep in mind that somewhere we've got to define that, and if we've got those set of rules, it's going to be a heck of a lot easier to fight this later on down the road.
With that, we'll move to B2, which I shall read. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida identifying and clarifying certain real property of city parks and redefining the boundaries of such parks, providing for an effective date requested by the City Council. Ms. Graves, you're most closely associated in my mind on this, so if you would like to comment before staff, it would be appropriate.
This is just going to allow us to kind of codify everything that we've done, and as we move forward to create a charter amendment, know the properties that we're speaking about. This is something we needed to do anyway, to housekeeping, as you would say, and David Gay and the Public Works Department's worked, put a lot of time and energy into this, and really, we just need to approve these names so that we can move forward towards the summary crafting our charter amendment.
All right, staff comments. Jim, do you have comments, or does Monty have comments, or does David Gay?
I think, as Ms. Graves said, that what we're doing is that we're giving proper names and identifying the park that has been sort of a historic assumption on the part of the public. For example, McWilliams Park really was not the McWilliams that everyone was talking about, but we've taken outlying partials, incorporated that under the full name of the park, as I believe the majority of residents of the city have always assumed. But legally speaking, it allows us to proceed on the charter amendments that will identify these parks as full partials.
All right, public, Mr. Day, you're associated with this. If you'd like to come forward, I don't know whether you would. You don't have to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ken Day, 1846 21st Avenue. I think Councilwoman Graves has said it very well. I would hope that you would please move forward with this. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mrs. Graves, for your help.
All right. Is there any further public comment? Seeing none, I'll close that. Council comment or a motion, but if there's comment, go forward, please. Whoever would like the floor has it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Mrs. Vok.
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
That brings us to 3B3, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, abandoning all City of Vero Beach interests in that certain utility easement retained by ordinance number 88-40, recorded in September 27, 1988. In official record book, 810, at page 1807 of the public records of the Indian River County requested by the Public Works Department. Staff comment, please.
Yes, this is a partial, a piece of land that we own. It's 20 feet wide and 90 feet long that we have really no practical use for, and so we are recommending that we abandon that. We're trying to clean up the assets and the properties that the city owns and those that are sort of isolated, in this particular case, over by Coral Avenue. It was a right-of-way at one time, and over the time, we've been abandoning portions of that.
All right, public hearing. Anyone who would like to comment? Seeing no comment, a close public hearing. Council comments or a motion, as you see fit.
Move to adopt as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Vok.
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
That will move us to 4A, and this is a first reading, meaning it will require a second reading. The second reading would be when, please?
May 20th.
May 20th. First reading by title for ordinances and resolutions that require a future public hearing. An ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida amending Section 6-4 of the Code of the City of Vero Beach to allow the sale, service, and consumption of alcohol beverages until 2:00 a.m., providing for conflict and separability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date requested by local business. Jim, I associate this one with you.
Yes, sir. We received a letter from, signed by about 20 businesses in town that serve alcohol, and they are requesting we extend the hours from 1:00 to 2:00. North and south of us go till 2:00, and what they've seen is a migration of vehicles that possibly should not be traveling the roadways at that time, going either to Fort Pierce or heading up to Brevard County. This would allow us to, in order to compete with those. We have also checked with the police chief. The police chief has no problem with this. Also, the planning director, Tim McGary, has signed off on it as well, so we are recommending it to the City Council for passage.
I would open hearing that, please. Seeing no public hearing, I close the council comments. Ms. Turner, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. In the documents, it references estimated revenue, increased revenue for these businesses. It also references a tax benefit to the city. Do we have any numbers to support these facts?
No, ma'am. It's just assumed if they stay open another hour that there would be additional revenues generated. Obviously, they would close otherwise, but by increasing the number of hours per week per store would obviously have a customer base and sales tax would be collected.
I would like to see some estimate of these numbers.
You'll note that this is what the business is proposing.
Certainly.
It's not what we determined.
No, no, no. But I would at least go back to this and say, hey, we can get some numbers on this.
So what are you going to do?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
To move it for a public hearing. Sorry. To the 20th.
To the 20th. Mr. Fletcher?
No.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Just wanted to make sure the motion is not for approval, but to move it for a public hearing on the 20th. Is that correct, Ms. Vok?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to city clerk matters. Mrs. Vok has got a somewhat convoluted, I'll get the words proper.
Yes, I will.
What she wants to do with her commissions. And by the way, if there's anybody that would like to serve on a commission, we have vacancies. We could use help.
Sure could. This is, the first one is for the Historic Preservation Commission. We did receive a letter from the state recommending that we have an architect on that commission. Mr. Jeffrey Ray, who now serves on the Architectural Review Commission, has volunteered to resign from that commission and move to our Historic Preservation Commission. And if that is done, Mrs. Vicki Gould, who presently serves as a full member on that commission, has volunteered to step down to an alternate position. And this is needed in order for the Historic Preservation Commission to move on some historic houses that they are working on designating, so.
Mr.? No, I understand that part of this is important for us to be a Florida-certified local government, but I would like for the public to understand why is that important? And I appreciate that the school's willing to take a step down so that we can get the certification. I mean, this is what we were trying to get when we made the move on the historical, to make it city residence and to make it a smaller commission, to meet those requirements.
Right, and we're right now at a standstill until we have an architect on that commission.
So do we need, Mrs. Vok, from my understanding, do we need a motion, or you just need consensus? Or what do you need?
A motion, please.
Huh?
A motion, please.
Do we have two applicants, or just a?
No, we're fine on how many applicants that we need for the board.
My apologies, I just see two applications on your backup.
Oh, I'm sorry, that would be for the next one, the Tree and Beautification Commission. We do have an application for that one.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to add Architect Jeffrey Ray as a permanent member of the Historic Preservation, and then to move Ms. Vicki Gould to alternate.
I'll second that. Further discussion? Motion? Oh, I meant, motion is second. Okay, Mrs. Vok, or is this roll call?
This is roll. Just a motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? No one?
Thank you. The next one's a little easier, the Tree and Beautification Commission. There is an alternate position open on that commission, and we have an application on file from Mr. Maurice Terriban that would like to serve on that commission.
Motion to approve, Mr. Maurice, for the position.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0.
And I just wanted to thank Mr. Terriban, who's a barely new member to our community, for his willingness to serve on the commission.
But not a new member to local government, apparently.
No. Appreciate that.
Mrs. Vok, does that get your...
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, Ms. Vok.
Go ahead.
We did receive a letter, I guess was actually addressed to you, about closed captioning of our meetings, that this apparently is being done by the county and many other areas. And knowing that we do have those in our community with hearing issues, could we get an estimate of what it would be involved, or what might be the most economical way that we could go forward with closed captioning of our meetings?
Yeah, I had whole twork on getting some estimates for us. It looks like it could be about $7,000. But, I mean, I can bring some different estimates to council so you can look at. It's, we did have the attorney look into this, and Wayne might want to...
Yeah, it doesn't appear to be a requirement for our channel, but it's obviously something you can do.
And we checked with the county, and they do not have it at this point. I know the letter did indicate that they do.
Ah, okay.
But they don't.
Thank you for verifying it. That was helpful as well for the discussion.
Is that $7,000 a recurring cost, or is that a one-time?
No, that would be a one-time.
It's a software addition.
Mr. Fletcher, what do you think about it?
I think we need to service our constituents any way we can. I would be in favor of this.
I concur. We want to be as open a government as possible. That includes everybody.
Do we need a motion or consensus?
I think we still need to bring it forward as a written proposal for something to be voted on. I just wanted to get interested. People wanting to continue pursuing it.
I agree.
And something that we could consider in a budget for next year.
Okay.
Mrs. Vok can put it on her agenda.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
All right, we have another one in the same category, too. And this is a letter that we got from DHHS. Def, no, I'm sorry. I got the wrong one. This is a letter we got from St. Lucie, Application for State Veterans Nursing Home Site Selection. And Mrs. Vok asked me what we should do about this, and, you know, you might, you can explain it better than I could, quite frankly, but I've learned that it was one of these things that all of us should be exposed to what we do.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you. All I received was a letter, and they asked that council consider sending in a support letter. So that's when I asked that you just bring it forward and see how council feels about it. And their deadline is this Thursday, correct?
It is. I would request that you contact Marty Zickar, those with the Veterans Council, and see, and get their support on it before we, as a council.
Yeah, I think that's a wise decision. What they're talking about for the public is a 90-bed facility with a long-term capacity of 300, but in tradition, so it's nowhere near us. I don't know.
But it is closer to serve our veterans than now in Daytona Beach, and I forgot what the other alternative was. So, I mean, I just want to make sure that the Veterans Council is aware of what's going on, and they support that initiative.
I concur.
Well, would we be contacting them before this?
That was going to be my question. If they're okay with it, do you want us to proceed with doing the letter?
I would feel comfortable if we have the Veterans Council approval with it and support.
Okay.
And I'm at the rest.
I agree.
I think we've got consensus on that, then. That's a good course of action, I think. Anything else under Mrs. Vok's area? We'll move on to City Manager Matters, and he has an item, which we'll let him explain.
Mine is a direction for the budget. If the council has particular, specific budget goals and objectives that they could be passed on, what I would like to recommend, and we have, you've set those goals and objectives for us in the past, but I think we have gotten ourselves into some situations where we have neglected some issues. For example, and I'll use Leisure Square as the example. We have some major capital that we need to put in there for roofing and building materials. The structures themselves are now being impacted. If you would allow, I would be very happy to bring a city council budget to you to address what we administratively feel need to be addressed. That would include both the expenditures and the revenue needs, and then the council could take, and that would be a budget that you could start paring down if you want to do. But if you put restrictions on it, as we experienced last year, there was a lot of convoluted thinking that went on the time we went through the exercise, and I think it was sort of, it was not a very smooth process. This way, if we come in and we need additional revenues for some reason, you can blame it on me, and you can do what you need to do, and then we can sort of go. But I think there are issues that we need to address, and we're going to give you our best opinion administratively of how we weigh the options, the alternatives, and where we put priorities. Because, as you know, we have a lot of priorities in the community, and I think we need to at least get that input from the people that are on the firing line, i.e. the folks that are down in the trenches making that happen.
I have a comment about this one, and I feel strongly, we have a city manager, we're legislators, and I feel we should leave it to the city manager to bring us forth a budget. Each of us has a chance to talk to him. I speak to him every week. He's patient enough to do that. And bring forth a budget, and between July 7th and 11th, we'll go over the budget. The only thing I would say is, I would like, since we haven't done it in detail on the electric, that it be given more detail. I do not believe that it's in the best interest that if there needs to be staff changes or efficiencies, and those are always where they're possible, always important, I believe those should emanate from the city manager and not by fiat from legislatures. I think that's bad for morale, and I have enough confidence in Jim that where there are material savings, he'll make them. So that's my feeling. I would rather set him loose, do his budget, bring it to us, and what we don't like, we'll change. We've done it every year for the years I've been here. That's my comment. Any further comment?
No, I agree with that process. He's the CEO, CFO, and all that. He's the one that's going to put it together, and we'll shoot at it when we give our budget hearings.
Mrs. Turner.
I think, just to be fair to Mr. O'Connor, I think he still is looking for a little more, some input from council. As far as my input, I certainly would look at holding our millage rate at what it is. In order to, I would like to pursue some of the recreation capital plans. I've been talking with Mr. Slezak for quite some time, that we hadn't seen capital repairs for our Leisure Square or for the Community Center, other areas that, yeah, at least we need to get into the planning zone on that. I'd like to see the completion of the water and wastewater treatment cross-training and the optimization plan. I'd like to see a plan for the cemetery in the Marina to get those, you know, a long-term plan on those financial, get the financial issues on both of those two enterprise funds resolved. And I would also like to see us try to incorporate some police training, additional police training into our budget. We've had a lot of retirements and losses in the police department. We've consolidated, trying to keep that at the 52, but by doing that, we also need to be investing in our policemen to give them the best training. So I'd like to see if we can boost that budget a bit, too. So those are the areas of my concern.
Okay, just to respond to that, because I think that's sort of a depictive of where we are. I can't spend more money and not have more revenue. And one of the things that we've also set as a goal is to try to become less reliant on utilities, which gives us only one other avenue for revenue stream, and that happens to be avalorum tax. We can't generate more sales tax or anything like that. So what I plan to do is bring to you the best budget I can and try to address those concerns, and it may have an impact, again, in a revenue stream that may be going. So, but that would give you the option and alternatives, then we'll put the priorities where we need. And I think you bring out a very good picture of, you know, where's our priorities, training police officers or maintaining our assets, facilities as they are. Because those are two diametric opposed issues in the departments, and we've got to be able to either say we're going to address them or not address them, and if we aren't, we then lower our priorities. But we will be looking at the Marina. We've had a very good year with the Marina this year, and so we do have some plans on the shelves that I don't necessarily agree with, but at least I think we need to reinvest in the assets that we have there. The cemetery, I think, is on a track, and we need to continue to monitor that. But I think we will be able to come up with that game plan, and then hopefully we will come to some agreement. As we all understand, the budget is the policy statement of the city council. We all will live by whatever determination is by the five folks here.
Jim, when, in preparation for the July 7th to 11th week, which I kind of don't enjoy, when would we, when would you bring us advanced stuff before that to study? And a week before is enough for me. It's just a procedural question.
Yeah.
One week before.
Okay.
We're trying to get it out.
Fourth of July, yeah. That's just early to get it.
I fell into that one, didn't I?
You know, if I could suggest, you know, I could really like the way the county does that. They just do it in one day, and just, it's over with. But if we could have a couple workshops ahead of time, because I think what Jim really likes to see is all of us together, talk about this, and then get a consensus, and then he can go forward and get this done. Otherwise, we come to budget day, and all of a sudden, we don't agree.
So would you prefer the budget workshops, the 7th through the 11th, or do you want us workshopping ahead of time?
What do you want, Jim?
Yeah.
I think keeping on the schedule we have now, and those workshops set where we do the, there's no reason to have a workshop and cut and then come back and do some more workshops. I agree with you, Jay, that it would be good if we could adopt the budget in one day, and I think at the end of that process, you do adopt the budget in one day, but you have to go through that, and that July timeframe gives us that.
Can we cut a day out of it this year, anyway? I'd be happy with two or three.
So...
That'll be dependent upon the council.
So, yeah, my opinion is, I would like Mr. O'Connor to go forward, work on it, and in July, we can rip it to shreds if we have to.
Yes, ma'am, that would be. And we will have apartments ready, if you can carry more departments in any one given day, but our experience last year, as you know, you guys went pretty well, line item by line item, and so it took some time.
Okay.
I would just like to have a workshop ahead of time, just so that he knows the policy of what we're going to, of what we want, instead of just showing up in July, and then we rip it to shreds.
I guess that's what I'm asking for now. If you all want to set those parameters, let me know what those are, but when we start the workshops, that's going to be with a proposed budget from my office.
Yeah, I would rather do it that way, and let's...
If we have concerns of how we want to do something, we need to go to him before the budget hearings.
Correct.
Yes, sir. Any input between now and then, either myself or Cindy, please don't hesitate, as you have not to this point. Hesitate to contact us and let us know, and give us your input as to what it is, and then we'll try to craft that around. But my goal this year is really, I think we've done a lot of reduction in costs. We've started managing. We have negotiations now going on where we're going to try to control the pension plans, and hopefully we have our pension committee set up. So we're attacking a lot of the long-term issues, but we need to really sit down and figure out what we want to retain and maintain at this level, and how we go forward from there. And that's hopefully what be depictive of my budget to you.
If you could just get something to us sooner than later, so we...
We would try to get that as soon as possible.
Or if anything, we could get a stated goal of what you're saying now, so that we're aware of where you're headed. I don't want to see restrictions in the scenarios that you put in front of us to do what we need to do to maintain the city or make the improvements we need to make.
Right. Well, the reason you're spending multiple days in the budget workshops, and they are workshops, is to start cutting where you will have the document beforehand, and if, for example, going in, you don't like the tax rate that I am recommending, then you have the right to say, okay, we're reducing revenues. Now, how do we equal that in expenditures? And I'm not afraid of that process, so that's...
The problem we have is the compression of time, of trying to address all of those issues in those five days and not having the opportunity to step out, talk with staff, explore opportunities. You know, we need time between the arguments.
I like it the way it is.
Okay.
Yeah, I concur. I understand the concern, but it's, for the years I've been involved in it, including when I was on the Finance Commission, it's painful at best. And I will give, I will give you one positive thing about it. I think in Jim's and Cindy's and everyone else's tenure, the city budgeting and finance processes and management processes are much better than they were. I mean, I think if I go back four years, where we started from had material problems, and there needed to be a lot of discussion. And I don't think we're in that position. I feel relatively comfortable when I get a general ledger or an income statement. I don't have very many questions. And I think Cindy can tell you that when she first came, I drove her nuts with questions.
Genuinely.
And I don't think we're in that position. I don't think we, I think it's a question of taking what we're doing and tuning that and changing it. There are some other priorities, and Jim mentioned one, the Leisure Square maintenance. I can think of others, but be that as it may. So philosophically, I think it's as least painful as it can be the way it is. I concur with Mr. Fletcher.
And don't worry, we do not take it personal when we get into the slicing and dicing.
So we'll have a book to us by the 1st of July, then, is what you're telling me?
Yes, sir.
And, you know, again, I understand the concern, but there's no good way of doing this, so be that as it may. Mr., is there any other matters for the city manager? There may be many. Hearing none, you get off, Jim.
Well, I will, just as an input, we will be making a presentation to the Finance Commission pertaining to the electric utility rates, and we have determined that we can recommend to the Finance Commission ultimately back to you about a 4.2% rate decrease, and a lot of that is our power purchase agreement. Costs have been below what we anticipated, and so we are seeing that there could be a downturn. The positive part of that is it'll be during the peak of our consumption period, and we will monitor it very closely to, if there's any adjustments need to be made, we will bring it back to the council.
One other thing, too, that Jim may want to comment, there's, and I don't know how many of these books are, but there's Prudential and others, Rocky Joyner, from our consultant, made an excellent presentation, it must have been yesterday, because I've been not in the country, excellent presentation on our pension, both, and a lot of talk about where we're going to go, and talk about contemplating a freeze and a change to a different form. In other words, a defined contribution instead of a defined benefit. But the book itself is a very useful book, and I would be glad to lend mine to anybody that doesn't have one. I got one because I came in the meeting.
We can get copies of those. We'll send them out to all the council.
But I feel relatively, Cindy having sat through the presentation, I feel relatively confident that we know what we're doing, and we're on the right path for the long term to keep from building up deficits, and we've had good investment returns over the last period of time, which is certainly heartening.
Yes, and what the mayor is referring to is our reconstituted Pension Board that's made up for the general employees, and we have made great strides, I believe, in identifying the issues. We have hired an attorney who represents us as we go through this transaction and transition, assuming that the council agrees to the union negotiated contracts, and those type of issues are third-party concerns that we still have, but we will be negotiating in good faith, obviously, to bring that forth with recommendation to the council. But your Pension Board for the general employees is designing and preparing for any transitional change that would be part of that action.
Jim, do you have any update for Unit 5? Where do we stand on that?
Tom, has he left?
Tom bailed out on us.
He was hoping by the end of May that Unit 5 would be back up. The part has been fabricated, and I'm not sure if we have it on site yet or not, and we were making arrangements with the contractor to come in and do that.
And do we have a bill for this yet?
No, sir. We anticipate that the bill will be under $200,000, but as you know, we think it's the contractor's responsibility and not ours, so we're still working through that exercise.
We're going to butt heads on that, I have a feeling.
Yes, sir, we probably will. But we have a pretty good case. We have a third party that will oversee the placing of that part, that will give us a third-party opinion as to, was it pre-existing that should have been fixed during overhaul, or was it something that occurred afterwards?
Okay, thank you.
All right, I guess we can move. It's 11:37. I think if we press on another 20 minutes or so.
Yeah.
Let's try it.
Yeah, let's finish.
Okay. We move on to City Attorney Matters.
Actually, Mr. Degg brought this to the attention of our city clerk, and we wanted to get this on the agenda for the council to discuss, so what better place than to put it under City Attorneys Matters. The High Speed Rail Commission, basically, they would sunset beginning of June unless the council decides that you want to extend that.
Well, I would look for council comments.
My first question is, what are they going to, what is their product? I've never, I mean, we put them together, but we never gave them a go-do, a product, an in-report, which is something I'd like to see.
Well, their actual resolution does require in six months that they submit a written report to council.
And remember, they did give you one report. I guess it was like an interim report.
They did. My question is, yeah, if we continue to sense it, what is the further objective? You know, do they have to have a goal plan, or what else would be done? I think it's been a terrific forum for us to bring, for the public to bring forward a lot of issues, and for those things to be discussed. But, yeah, they need a clear objective or whatever. I mean, at this time, the county's moving forward. They've hired a consultant to do review of the EIS and have given a scope of work. We've prepared resolutions. We've identified historic properties. I'm not sure, you know, what we will task this commission with going forward. I mean, obviously, it's been, like I said, great for the public, but they need a clear objective. And maybe Mr. Degg can offer us one. What kind of plan can we...
What the additional objective would be, because we've already...
Yeah, at a length of time, it won't be a reasonable length of time.
Mr. Degg, you're called upon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council. Ken Degg, 1846 21st Avenue, High Speed Rail Chairman. Have some paperwork for you.
Thanks, Ken. Want to share? I'll just give her mine.
Thank you very much. I did a quick summary because I know your time is valuable. And you know, you all know that we've collected quite a bit of information. Anyway, first of all, I'd like to thank you as a council for forming this High Speed Rail Commission. Got a lot of thanks throughout the community and other communities for you doing this. To my knowledge, this is the only commission in the region that's put together where people can come in. It's open forum. We have taped meetings. In this summary I talked about, we, with the help of the city clerk, we set up a webpage where there's a whole bunch of information where people can go in and take a look. Other communities can take a look. And I'll just try to get through this quickly so the folks out there can hear this. And I wrote it out for your pleasure. Over the last four months, the High Speed Rail Commission has had numerous meetings and met with citizens concerned with possible impacts to our community connected to All Aboard Florida Project. The High Speed Rail Commission has heard presentations from Mike Busher and Kim Delaney of the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, Rusty Roberts of All Aboard Florida, Phil Matson, Metropolitan Planning Director, Indian River Commissioner, Chairman Peter O'Brien, Mr. Monte Falls, our Public Works Director, Mr. Jim O'Connor, our city manager. We have scheduled to speak at our next meeting, Commission Member, Mr. Solari from the County Commission. We've also extended an invitation to All Aboard Florida Executive members. I haven't heard back from them yet. Numerous citizens have addressed the High Speed Rail Commission with their information and concerns that are on file. The High Speed Rail Commission has been very open to the public. Feedback has been such that local and surrounding community and business leaders would like to keep the High Speed Rail Commission active to continue with this process that is before us. The High Speed Rail Commission is an advisory board to the City of Vero Beach Council that follows sunshine law and ethic requirements. The High Speed Rail Commission is the only committed forum within the region, other than the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, to publicly address the All Aboard Florida concerns. Our meetings are recorded and minutes are taken. There is a history for citizens to follow. The city council has directed the High Speed Rail Commission to reach out to the community and listed below is just some of the things that we've done, because I didn't want to make this a whole long, lengthy presentation. There's more to come later on, of what has been done, including future meetings and others throughout the community. We have some meetings that are being put together for sometime in June, at the end of June, also July and August. Commission, just some of the things that we've done as Commission Members. Commission Member Hedy spoke as a panelist at the Republican Supper Club function. Commission Member Channel hosts a coalition meeting at the Chamber of Commerce Center. As Chairman of the High Speed Rail Commission, I spoke at a Main Street function where concerns were written down and included in the High Speed Rail Commission minutes. We put together requested time, and I thank you again as a council. It is included in your resolution that you approved today for the additional time. And also, what I feel is very important to this community, and I know it is to you all, is to hold meetings here at our, inside our county. I also was invited to attend a Democrat Supper Club function and answered questions where the Deputy Mayor of Palm Bay also attended. And I routed those. Those people had a lot of questions, so I routed them to Mrs. Vox's office where a lot of materials on file to help them with what they're working on because they realize they have similar concerns like we do here in this community. So information is there for them to start biting into what we've been doing. I also rode the bus to survey the rail crossings along with our city manager, Public Works Director, to view the crossings and other aspects with various local, state, and elected officials, FDOD officials, and as well as the Director of Community Relations for Congressman Posey's office, and that's Mr. David Jackson. I was able to chat with him a little bit to share the concerns that we've had as a community, that we've heard at the High Speed Rail Commission and throughout, to get help from Congressman Posey and the other officials up that way. Back to, one of the things I keep digging at is please grant us more time. Please allow us to have the meetings here with, inside this community. The DOT officials on there, on the bus from our state level, learned quite a bit from them how the regulations actually work, what regulations are going to be followed when they put this together, what part does the Federal Rail Administration play in this. What I look for is the decision-makers. We all know, and I know you all understand this as elected officials, this project is going to have an impact on our community. And how are we going to deal with that? And I know a lot of you, I know it's come to your ears about mitigation. How are we going to mitigate with this process if indeed this does happen here? Attended the Indian River County Chamber Leadership Summit where Rusty Roberts gave a presentation and answered questions. That, it is my hope that that presentation, it was taped. And hopefully we can put that up on the site that we have all letter information on for others to take a look at. It was a presentation that was very well done. There was a lot of questions from the community there, from business leaders and residents to Mr. Roberts on All Aboard Florida. So I think you'll find that interesting if you do go in and take a look. All board members that you've appointed to this commission have been working very hard. They themselves are gathering articles. They're scanning the websites out there. They've been going through meetings also. They also funded the materials to Ms. Vox's office, which are also put up on site, too, for others to take a look at. Let's see. And you know about, okay. As a guest and observer, I have attended various group meetings related to the concerns about All Aboard Florida. Plan this week is a scheduled meeting with the Culture Council of Indian River County. Next week planned scheduled meetings with Congressman Posey and the Indian River County Hospital District Trustees. These scheduled meetings are for June and further. The High Speed Rail Commission is monitoring All Aboard Florida interest and activity within the community and will put together a larger summary to aid in the draft of the environmental impact study. The environmental impact study, you all know what that is. The community has many questions about that. That is the time when the window will be open for the public to comment, and that includes our elected bodies. It's going to be very important that we have the information together. As a city, I have been working with the county with the city's interest. That will be compiled along with the county's concerns also. And we can work not only as a cities and as the county, we will work as a whole. It has been very helpful to a lot of the county people that I've spoken with. The meetings here that your High Speed Rail Commission's had, there's been a lot of information that has already been brought in. And again, we're scheduling future meetings for more information to come in where people can take a look at this and gather the thoughts for this very important environmental impact statement coming out. There's a lot of questions around this of how exactly are we going to make our case as a city and as a county and join up with the other counties throughout the region. We have communities to the north of us that would also like to join with us. Again, back to the beauty of having the High Speed Rail Commission, these meetings are out in the open. They're taped. We have the city clerk there doing the official meetings as an official record. These materials, and as we're working on our summary, which I am aware of, there is another one due here in June where we'll compile more information for you to read through to go into the next phases for the environmental study that's coming out. The folks from All Aboard Florida think the study may come out sometime in June or later. They're not the ones to release the study. It's the Federal Rail Administration that will release the study. They are taking the input in. Now, all the letters that we're sending out in community groups, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, are helpful. Some folks are looking at that, but that is not part of what now the Federal Rail Commission is looking at. Now, back to the meetings with our federal officials, we need their help. And the number one issue is to get the extra time granted. The 45 days or 30-day window comment time is, in my humble opinion, is not enough time for us. They could come back and say, you just have 30 days. Now, this community has spoken out very, very loudly. And what we've been doing as a commission is gathering people together to be one loud voice. Yes, Mr. Kramer?
You know, I mean, it's pretty obvious that we need a little more discovery on a lot of these issues. Your commission has been a great sounding board for the community. Just your estimation, I mean, another six months, five months, you think would work?
I think another six months would be helpful. And within that time, let's hope they release the EIS study. By the time it comes out, the idea is, my thing is, let's say for the sake of argument, it really does come out in June, and they only give us so much time. I want to have everything in order where as a city and along with the county and also with Felsmer and Sebastian, we can join together to put all of our concerns down. And what we're going to be working on here in the very near future is compiling the thoughts together with the High Speed Rail Commission, funneling it to you folks for you to make your official rulings on what the recommendations that we make.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to extend it to another six months.
I have, I have just a few. I want to make sure that we really work in line with the county because as far as a governing body that's going to have the influence for the mitigation, it's going to be the county.
Understood.
Plus, they're expending the dollars. That's saving us right now.
Yes.
So I want to make sure we're working in tandem with them. And also, I want us to be very careful as this issue expands and as our commissioners get more involved, we're very cognizant of possible sunshine violations at these meetings.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it's getting sticky out there.
Yes.
So, Ms. Graves, what's your sense of Mr. Kramer's motion?
I think let's, let's go forward, but let's have these issues in mind as we do and pay particular attention to them and make sure that we are, we're in tandem with the county. We're not isolating ourselves from the county.
Is that a second?
Yes, as a 40-second.
All right. Yes, sir.
I hope, I hope you have a good concept of your end product, of recommendations and actions the city council could take. I'm looking for an end product at the end of, it's June 9.
Yes, sir. You will have it.
Is there further public comment?
Mayor?
Yes.
If you do take action, I think all we really need is probably a vote of the council.
I'm going to go there.
Okay.
And I was kind of, I just wondered. Yes, sir.
This might already be addressed, but is there...
You got to give us, sir.
Oh, sorry. Again, Stephen George, 746, 19th Place, Vero Beach, Florida. Is there an estimated cost to the city or to the county as to retrofit or new gates to make this project go forward? Is that something that we already have or we plan to have?
I don't think, I don't think without the EIS study, correct me, Mr. Dig, we have really know what it'll take. And there is a recommendation from the Federal Rail gentleman up there that if, if the thing gets built, it needs to have a sealed corridor. We do not know the answer to your question at this time.
I don't even think we have the engineering plan.
We don't have. And in fact, in June, they have to come through and look at the 80 crossings. Well, that may be a wrong number, but going north to Cocoa. So we do not know the answer to your question.
They haven't, they haven't done the survey on even the number of crossings.
Right.
Or the maintenance that they'll have, or, excuse me, the enhancement they'll need for each of those crossings. They haven't even completed that yet.
Okay. So just to piggyback on your comments, so that delivery of costs is going to come from the federal government, All Aboard?
We don't know any answers to any of those questions.
We keep asking.
Thank you.
All right. I do have a motion, and I will allow Mr. Dig to comment.
Thank you. And just one quick thing. You talked about a sealed corridor. And I think you did read the information from one of the engineers that reviewed the study. And right now, the engineer is not going along with All Aboard's findings on sealed corridor because in the federal regulations, it's a suggestion. These are some of the things now, as we make recommendations to you all, to the city council, that's one of the things that have come to our ears as a commission about a sealed corridor, will give you that information. And you can make the determination if you want a sealed corridor element part of the EIS study. Also, the county has similar concerns. And I have been in contact with our county commissioners, County Commissioner Bob Solari, also Commissioner O'Brien. They are aware of our concerns. And yes, Ms. Graves, you're absolutely right. We do have to work very closely with the county, especially when they're starting to come in to help with some of the costs and whatnot. And we will be doing that. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, Mr. Comment. Is this a voice vote?
Well...
You just need a consensus.
Well, no, I'd rather you have a vote because you're, to make it clear, it's unless the council takes, gives other direction. So I think direction is going to have to be by official action. And I would suggest if you want to extend it six months, why don't you just pick a date, December 1, maybe, is roughly six months.
That's fine.
Uh, to, unless they complete their work ahead of time.
I'll amend the motion for December 1.
Or sooner.
And you'll second it?
I'll amend the second.
Second.
Now, do we vote one by one or just all in favor?
I don't think it really matters.
Okay, all in favor, aye. Opposed, it passes 5-0.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Please come back by June 6 with a product. Okay, we are moving to City Council Matters. New business, number one, new boat launch facility requested by Ms. Graves.
I have Mr. Dritten Bass kindly joining us here today. This is just for council to consider. This isn't yes or a no, but is this something that we want to pursue just looking at the plans for what this would offer? If you hear from Mr. Dritten Bass, I think he believes this would be less of an impact on the lagoon than the current proposed Oslo Boat Ramp, so.
Paul Dritten Bass, good morning.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, roughly. Mr. Mayor, council members, today I'm here as your find commissioner for Indian River County. I'm not here to, thank you very much, I'm not here to talk about Oslo today. I'm here to talk about a new facility for boat launching from the mainland. Thank you very much. We're all familiar with this site, and it's a suggested mainland boat ramp for larger trailer boat vessels up to about 36 feet. And this is only a concept. And that's why I wanted to bring it to you this, today. I've had meetings with Monte Falls and Rob Bolton on the site to brainstorm the possibility. And the slide that you have in front of you is actually an aerial view of the current water treatment facility for the City of Vero Beach. The letter A is the, what would be proposed as the launch basin. That is the old barge bunker fuel delivery site that when the power plant was burning, those number twos or whatever they were, that's where the barges came in. And there's, there's actual barriers adjacent to the piling of the bridge to fend off the barges in case of bad weather. That current launch basin is approximately 125 feet wide, north to south, and 300 feet deep, east to west. And it's about eight feet deep. And on Sunday, my wife and I went over there on Sunday afternoon, and we did some fathom with the boat, just a depth finding, just to confirm that. It's about seven to eight feet. It gase into the north seawall. And it's about six to five feet shallowish going towards the intercoastal waterway channel. So the proposal here is to take that southeast tip where you see letter B as in Baker. There's a little canal there that, there's a discharge pipe that actually is a discharge pipe for exercising one of the generators from the power plant. And that pipe would have to be extended or rerouted so that that section could be filled in and mitigated. There's mangroves in there. And then stabilize the eastern shore. And that would create a site of approximately two and a half acres of usable site for a boat launch site. I feel this is a better site for the new launch facility than the discussion on the 45th Street or the 69th Street as proposed new, as the objective is a new launch site from the mainland, whether it's the city or the county. Find is, on your trim notices every year, there's a small line item for Florida Inland Navigation District. On a $250,000 house, it's about $7. But those collected funds go into our budget for maintaining the intercoastal waterway for navigation, as well as enhancing access to the intercoastal waterway and the Indian River Lagoon through Waterway Assistant Program Grants. This is the overlay that I, just did a thumbnail sketch showing how that two and a half acres could be infilled. And the access from Indian River Drive, I have another slide to show that access. But there's room underneath the DOT rideaway for some pretty large ramps. It's very difficult right now to launch a, if you had a 36-foot boat on a trailer, to find a ramp in Indian River County or the city that you can launch a boat like that. You think that Memorial Island would be a good one, but I've witnessed many times... You think that Memorial Island would be a good one, but I've witnessed many times when people go right off the end of that ramp and they're locking up that trailer due to scouring underneath the end of that ramp. It looks good, but it's a bad ramp for big boats. They're actually launching the larger boats on the newly renovated ramps in McWilliam Park because those now have a buried ramp at the end where anti-scouring is prevented, and you can get a larger vessel in there. But unfortunately, there isn't enough maneuvering space for a larger boat. So we really need a, a space where we can launch larger vessels, and this one would facilitate that. And talking to Rob, DOT has no objection to access underneath their right-of-way for the ramp, actually, not for the ramp, but for the storing of the sailboats that Charlie Pope and his foundation are using there, doing right now. So hopefully, through engineering process, due process, maybe DOT would have no objection with the ramp underneath the bridge. There's about 18 to 20-foot of clearance here, so there's plenty of clearance underneath the bridge. And the rowing club has a ramp on the Far Eastern Point right now. The Youth Sailing Foundation with Charlie Pope has a small spit that they launch through the canal, and they come out to launch their little sailboats. And a kayak, floating kayak and a sail launch underneath the bridge could easily be accommodated. So this is just north of Fairlane Harbor, which is to the south, which is the, the subdivision with mostly manufactured housing. And just to show a brief overview of acreage, if and when, and hopefully it's within my lifetime, if the power plant is deconstructed, if the sewer plant or water treatment plant is consolidated with the county, there's approximately 33 and a half acres here that could be the new face of Vero Beach for recreational use. And we need to think long-term. Time passes very quickly when you're doing master planning. But that's a possibility, 1,250 lineal feet of riverfront where if it's maintained as public use and in the public hands, a lot could be done there by the city and maybe in collaboration with the county and interlocal agreements with WAP funding. Remember, WAP grant funding, those dollars that are collected are for the entire county. So if the funding that we're offering here for 50% of design, phase one, and 50% of construction, the county's paying too. So it's not just the city putting up the money. But someone has to start the design process, and it has to start with an entity such as the city or the county. The entrance, fortunately, on Indian River Drive, or Indian River Boulevard, excuse me, right by letter F, there's a southbound left-turn lane for coming in. And a northbound, there's a, a large turning radius coming into the control gate. The item G would be a control point. The concerns that Rob has with this site would be, number one, safety for the sailing, Youth Sailing Foundation. If the road was improved to get back to the peninsula, the conflict with them launching boats and traffic of larger vessels. I think this could be overcome with a new launch site for them to get out of this little spit where it's very narrow and very shallow, closer to the launch ramp where the canoe launch is, the, and the large rowing vessels are. Security, of course, we'd have to relocate the gate. We'd have to secure this water treatment facility so that it's not accessible by the public. Engineering, of course, would have to be done, and the cost associated with it using WAP Waterway Assistance Program grant funding. This is a shot, actually, Sunday, from the north looking to the southwest. This is the jetty as you enter the launch basin site. That's right where the last bridge piling or support is on the land and goes to water. Here's a shot where the ramp, ramps could be placed in between the foundations, engineering-wise, staying away from the angle of repose on the foundations of those supports for the bridge and designing the ramps to go to the south and utilizing this stabilized seawall, concrete seawall around that perimeter. There you can see some of the sailboats that are stored under the DOT right-of-way. And this is actually a view of the intake for the power plant, which years ago was very active with water coming in there, which is only exercised periodically now, and it has been safed to keep the public out. So if someone was drifting, they can't be sucked into the power plant. Don't, don't feel that's a safety issue. There's two ways to fund this. One is a maritime master plan.
Let me stop you just for a second. If you go back to this, this drawing.
Yes.
If you can do that.
Yes, sir.
There you go. Where you, I'm a member of the sailing club, although not as active as I'd like to be. Where you have the word rowing there, that's where the bigger sailboats are launched. In other words, they're currently being launched there. It's not ideal, but there is a launchable area. The other thing is, we've been concerned in the sailing club that even at this point with the rowing club and, and, and it's really rowers at this point more than kayak people, but it could be either, either would be great. We've been concerned with the, as you accurately said, with the traffic in front of the tin shed, which we have rented to Youth Sailing Foundation, because what happens is, is they come in there with cars, it's simply dangerous. You have little children who are 10 years old, and you have a, you know, seven and a half-foot boat. To make this work for the sailing club, and I, I can't speak for Charlie and probably for the rowing people, and I can't speak for them, but where you have the word circulation area there, and I don't know where the money would come from, you'd have to move, in effect, the building or buildings.
Right.
For the sailing club to that particular area. And of course, that would be an, an improvement for them, really. But you could not have traffic, you know, moving in front of where those children are.
That's correct.
And, and that, where you have the word rowing, that ramp is not sufficient or, or adequate for either the, the rowing people or the sailing people.
Right. That's the shoreline.
And all I'm, all I'm suggesting to you is that.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of engineering and logistics that have to be worked out.
Okay. Thank you.
That, the area there where it says rowing, that's a conducive area because it's out of the powerboat area, and it's shallow. It's a, it's a great place. It's stable, it's shallow. That, that's a good spot for sailing, rowing, kayak launching. Kayaks work pretty well on the floating docks as well. But all that has to be worked out, Mr. Mayor, that, that's, you're absolutely right, and that's, those are Rob's concerns as well, safety, security. One nice thing about a launch site that's in the public eye, it's almost supervised 24 hours a day, such as this, versus a remote site. Many of us have launched our boats in remote sites and come back, and, and our vehicles have been vandalized because it's just too remote. This is something that's almost self-policing, which is an encouraging thing for, for, for parking your car and spending long terms out at, in the river or going out in the ocean.
Is there any possibility that this could be an alternate to the Oslo improvement, which I am personally opposed to?
Completely different thing, I would think.
Well, that's a completely different idea. Oslo, they're looking to improve that site, but not to make it for larger boats. They're just looking to improve that site for access to the lagoon. As, as it's proposed right now and the engineering, I'm not in favor as a Find Commissioner, I can tell you that. We're going to be meeting in June to discuss it collectively. So I really can't comment too much about that right now, Mr. Mayor, but I, I think that there, there, there's improvements that could be made at Oslo that could benefit the access to the lagoon, but as, as submitted by the county, I'm not in favor.
Thank you for your comment. Go ahead, Mr..
Now, I guess what I'm really looking for is a substantiated need for a boat ramp like this. Yeah. And I realize that those kind of studies you said have been, how many 37-foot boats do we have on trailers that need to be launched? I mean, we have ramps at Riverside Park, we have them at McWilliam Park within the city. So I guess, once we've established a need.
That's right.
I do think, however, I think it would be interesting to consider doing some type of maritime master plan. You know, I mean, certainly you cannot take advantage of, of these grants or the things that are available to us when we don't have a plan.
Right.
You know, and city government suffers from an election, annual election.
Yes.
We're changing things, so being able to direct, you know, any kind of planning effort is very, very limited.
Yes.
But I think certainly there, yeah, there's some potential, there's some things to, to consider and to look at, and I thank you for bringing the idea forward.
Thank you, Mayor. One other comment, too, as far as the sewer plant's concerned, there are some of us that least believe, and there's been some work done in, that it isn't at all dependent upon anything between the county and the city. We, the city, are competent and could be competent, which is something we'll have to discuss to move this out to the airport facility in the years ahead. So the point I, I bring to you is, and this is in support of Mr. Turner's, and Mr. Kramer may want to comment, point that, that probably a plan for this, a maritime plan, probably makes some sense, because we certainly could do something about the sewer plant in the next window of time, five, eight years, something like that, if we wanted to.
That's correct. And in fact, the maritime master plan is a countywide study, and it looks at needs. Do we have enough launch ramps already? You know, that's where it has to start, in my opinion. And, but it's all part, those can also be funded by Find. But I want to thank you just for the time today. Thank you, Councilmember Graves, for bringing me to the, onto the agenda. I just want everyone to be aware that there is a good site available to us immediately, could be started, the planning, in the future, but I think this is a better site than 45th or 49th. Those sites up there are very shallow, very remote, and would require a lot more improvement to get to them than this site would.
I'm interested in what Mr. Fletcher, Mr. Kramer, and Ms. Graves think about this. You know what the other two of us think? We generally.
I, I look strongly favorable on this. I've mentioned that, that once the power plant is gone, that should be a boat lamp, excuse, boat ramp in there. It's just homemade for that purpose. It's nice and deep, and we have that whole park to develop. I, I look, and this is favorable.
Ms. Graves?
I'm, I'm in favor of this. I'm in favor of what it can mean long-term for public use. I also think as one of the mainland residents on council, this is something we're lacking on the mainland. I mean, yes, you do have all of these other facilities, but they are on the barrier island, and this could serve our mainland residents who have kayaks, and also our residents countywide that have larger boats.
Mr. Kramer? Well, there's, there's some concerns there, you know. First of all, you've got parking along the, the frontage of the Indian River. Seems to me you could probably have better use for frontage on the Indian River than parking, although I, you know, I think that can be moved. You know, the idea that she, your clearance is what, 18 feet, you said? And you'd be launching larger sailboats or larger boats, might have tuna towers or something like that?
Right.
You know, I think, you know, I'm not opposed to, to continuing to look at this. I think there's issues here, but, you know, they can probably be worked out in the end. But let's, let's, let's keep looking at it. Let's see what happens.
Yeah, I'm happy to see a plan, somebody has a plan at all come forward.
You know.
And like you say, as long-term, we got to start thinking about this. Now is the time to start planning.
Absolutely.
You also, and, and you also have the land on the other side of the, of the barge canal.
Yes.
And you also have the canal that, where the manatees hang out to the north. And there, you know, there are picnic tables and material behind there, and of course, our need for those two fuel tanks that are sitting there is fast evaporating one way or another. So there also is the possibility of, I would think, behind the other plan. I don't know, Jim, what do you think?
What I would, and I think I'm getting the direction from council now, we can have both the electric and water and wastewater utilities work with Paul and try to work on a plan that would incorporate either one or both of these sides. We do have homeland security issues, and maybe an overall plan itself would have to be developed. But I, I think the direction the council's saying that it, we could look into this, see if there is some type of plan or process.
I think we still have to develop, establish that there's a need, you know, before we go in, we're spending planning money. Somebody convinced me that we have a need for these ramps.
Okay. And then that's the countywide.
The start.
That's the master plan criteria that was forwarded to council members. It's, it's like A through Z or whatever, and it addresses all of that, the prerequisites. And a master plan, I mean, as an architect, not as a Find Commissioner, I'd love to see a master plan for this whole site someday to show what could be done with the city of Fort Pierce, for, excuse me, the face of Vero Beach, like we did for the face of Fort Pierce downtown.
Fort Pierce looks fantastic.
It's turned out fantastic. We have an opportunity here over the next 20 years that we should not overlook.
But, but it would also have to correspond with the county plan as, as to the need of what Ms. Turner's talking about, so.
Yes. Thank you again for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your work, Paul.
Thank you very much.
All right. That brings us to City Council member comments. Is there anything before that question? I have no comments. I've been out of the country. Mr. Kramer?
It was actually a pretty busy week. I did a good tour of Camp Haven. I was really surprised that they have a really nice horticulture, I think, is that what you call it, or hydroponic program going on. Did attend the compassionate Vero Beach meeting, was very impressed with the individuals that showed up there, learned quite a bit, attended the National Day of Prayer. My hope is that Vero Beach will continue to facilitate that well into the future. It's a good group that shows up. Had an interesting, interesting meeting with the grand opening of the Havana Cigar and Wine Bar with David Rodriguez. I think this is an entrepreneur in our area that really kind of tapped into an interesting niche in that he's got lounge chairs, a wine bar, and you can smoke cigars there, although I don't smoke, smoke, but it seems to be quite unique. Also, attended the All Aboard Florida meeting with the, the Chamber of Commerce. Didn't get to sit through all, all of it, but was, was very impressed with how people behaved themselves. And also did the, the blessing of the Humane Society for the animals. I'll let the Lord go further with that.
Tended the Taste de Vero, our Ocean Drive businesses and restaurants in the area, had an opportunity to, to let us sample their things. It was a great success. The pleasure being out with our tree commission and Galafferty from Planning over at Beechland Elementary. The children are given little six-inch oak, oak trees for them to take home and to take care of. And then we had the pleasure of awarding to fifth grade Tessa Johnson, who had her, her seedling last year. Like I said, they start off at six inches. Hers grew to 29 inches with her loving tender care. So that was a great example to pass on to the kids. Was at Relay for Life and walking out there, supporting all our survivors, making their initial lap around the Vero Beach High School. And at the Humane Society with the blessing of the animals, they said it's the best example of unconditional love and what we get from our pets. And I think that's, you know, something that we can continue to work on and share in our lives. Last but not least, hope to see everybody out at the airshow. Cheer on the Blue Angels. Thanks.
Ms. Graves?
I attended the Arbor Day Tree Planting by the city. I was accompanied by the city manager and vice chair Dan Downey, and three of us looked at the tree. It looks amazing. It's a great addition to Charles Park, and I want to thank the tree commission for all their work and also congratulate the city of Vero Beach for being a tree city once again, so.
33 years.
Yep, it's a long time. Attended the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council down in Stewart. Nothing traumatic happened. There was a push to rename 750 since there are no longer seven counties participating. They wanted to go back to the old original name. That didn't take root. Nobody wanted to change, so no big deal. We all know what it is. I attended Warren Winchester's services. Really nice service, really, really nice service. I saw Ms. Bach there and a few other of you there. Thank you very much for joining us.[1781.21]